We're going to call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. DeWolff now?
Here.
Mr. Luer?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay? Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Napoloni? Mr. Capello?
Here. And Mr. Napoloni sends his apologies, so he's not going to be able to make it tonight. And we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll work on that. So, tonight, we're going to have a special presentation from John Henry of the New Jersey School Boards Training. He's going to be giving us a session on STEM and sustainability for our board certification. And I believe we have Mr. Henry with us, or we will in a second. Hi, Mr. Henry, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How's everybody doing tonight?
Well, thank you.
You're doing well, thank you. Why not let everybody introduce themselves?
How you doing? I'm Dave Luer.
Sandy Kellis, Assistant Superintendent.
Mike Anderson, one of the board members.
Dino Capella, board member.
Steve Forte, Superintendent.
Damaris Skoralski, Assistant Administrator.
Don Cass, board member.
Okay, everybody. Okay, so, I'm John Henry with the Jersey School Boards Association on their I-STEM and Sustainable Schools Specialist. So, nice to meet everybody tonight. So, this is, by the way, as far as I know, the first 90-minute video conferencing for credit that school boards has done. So, if the technology holds up, we're good.
That's great. That's really exciting.
Does anybody have anything to share before we get into this? Because what's really going to happen tonight is, I'm going to go over a short form of our academy training on alternative funding and sustainable schools. And then we'll get into the specific questions that were asked with water resources and also electric buses. I've ruined biodiesel because there's no schools that I'm aware of that's doing electric buses, at least that I'm aware of. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but I can share what I know. So, we'll get into that. And then we'll get into some STEM resources that are available. And I'll share some resources and other areas that may be of interest.
Sounds good. Does anybody have anything they'd like to lead off with? John, I mean, again, I think, you know, you hit it on the head. Some of the questions we sent you, we have a STEM program currently at our middle school. I know some of the board members have expressed interest on looking at how we can roll out STEM into our two elementary schools. And also, of course, you know, sustainability things like the electric buses or alternate energy buses.
Right. And how far along are you with Sustainable Jersey for Schools?
We have, we signed up this year. We have initiated a few programs, but we're really just in the first, like, Steve, about six, first six months, really, since we joined?
Six months. We joined six months ago.
And how, how have you connected that with student learning? Have you done much in that area?
Recycling, community resources. We have two school gardens. So, that's, at this point, we've designated a school teacher who oversees our sustainability.
We've also started coordinating with the Town Green Sustainability Committee. We've done a couple of tree plantings, or we have one, we're going to do another one this spring. So, we've been working with them as well and trying to coordinate between what the town's efforts are.
Okay. That's good. I mean, one of the ways you can connect STEM is actually through the lens of sustainability. So, as you progress with your initiatives in the school, and you start to get those 17 categories with Sustainable Jersey for Schools, or the way other green ribbon, eco schools, any one of those is a really nice way to actually connect the students. So, that is one way to really connect the kids to STEM STEAM education. Some of the other schools that are doing that are having a lot of success because it's really about place-based learning, and the kids really get into that. So, if you want student engagement, and their interest level is up, have them part of that. That's just what I've seen around the state, which is really working well. So, if the students are part of your green team, and they're learning, and they're moving along, and helping green your school, that's a great way to do it. Have you looked at some of the other certifications, like green ribbon school or eco schools? Or are you doing any?
We are. I don't think currently.
No, not currently. We, this is our first year. We just rolled out our elementary STEM curriculum. This is the first year. So, next year, I think, we'll be much stronger with it. And I think it would be awesome to add a green team. I think that the teacher who is overseeing it at this point would really like to do something like that. We do have an opportunity in the day, actually built into the day, where students could work on those types of projects.
That's great that you have it built into the day instead of just after school. Not that it can't be, but it's great that you have it during the day. By the way, I'm a former technology education and educational technology teacher. I spent 14 years in a classroom, and then I left, I left teaching when I did a fellowship at NASA headquarters. Then I came back to that, spent one year down at NASA, and then I came back, and I never went back to classroom. I started doing a lot of professional development training with teachers and problem, project-based learning. And then I did that for about six years, and ended up at school boards in 2012. And I've been with them ever since, doing training, developing programs, running grants, and a variety of other things that we do there. So, if there are no other questions, or anybody else has anything else to share, I'm going to jump right in. And please feel free to ask questions along the way. I mean, this is just us tonight, so that's good.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, you're going to have to help me out here, and since I can't see what you're looking at, so how does that look?
You look great.
The reason why you don't see me, because I actually didn't share the screen yet. Details.
There you go.
There you go.
Yep.
Better?
Yep, just came up.
One of the things that the New Jersey School Boards Association really implemented back in 2012 and 2013 was really to look at providing safe and healthy school and learning environment. So, it was kind of stepping out a little bit from their norm of doing policy, strategic planning, and legal governance. And then they really moved into the STEM and sustainable schools, because they thought that was an area that school board members would really benefit from. So, that's really the premise here, and the bottom line was to take a look at lowering operating costs and creating healthier learning environments. So, for me, that's what it's really about, is, you know, you have the 2% cap, and you've got some other budget constraints there. So, if you're really doing the whole school sustainability framework, which we'll get into in a little bit, you can really save quite a bit of money. And some of the schools that have been doing this for a while have actually done that very successfully. But it's just not one area of the school that you're going to do that. You're going to look at the entire system of the school, look for savings in all those areas. And again, like I said, we'll get into that. So, one of the ways that we're doing this, one of accomplishing our goal, is through training. As many people as we possibly can, board members, I mean, the training at workshop with VAs, a lot of facility directors are actually showing up at some of our workshops. This really is about a green team when you're doing this. So, you should not do this in isolation. There should really be a green team. The other goal that we accomplished was that, back in 2013, we started to put together with, in conjunction with Sustainable Jersey, we started to work to create the Sustainable Jersey for Schools certification. Now, at that time, coincidentally, when we put that together with Sustainable Jersey, we did not know that there was going to be over 150 schools at the first year. We expected, say, 12 to 20 schools were going to be registered, and it has been highly successful. So, you know, we were pleasantly surprised after we launched Sustainable Jersey for Schools at Workshop 2014, that within a year, there was that many schools. We had 59 certified year one. So, it was pretty incredible. We also offer sustainable services through policy, district goal setting, strategic planning. And amazingly, we have a lot of people who are at headquarters, in field service reps, actually being trained in sustainability, so they can actually share their resources as well from their perspective, which is really nice to see. Took a little while, but we're getting there. So, has any, have any of you heard about the Sustainable Schools Project, the guidebook that was launched? We actually kicked this off last year, 2015, at workshop. Are you familiar with this document?
I'm not. I think we're shaking, all shaking our heads.
Okay, so, this was one of the first thing that School Boards Association did, and I just thought, if you are not aware of it, this document is a PDF download on NJSPA. There's the website right there, on the bottom right. And so, what this was, is we decided that what was needed was the process of greening existing schools, because that's really the most difficult. When new buildings are built green, that's easy to do, because the architect, the engineers can specify what's in there. You kind of know what you're getting. We did not know how successful and the process was for existing schools. So, we kicked this project off with 11 pilot schools. We captured the information. Each school picked a measurable objective that they wanted to address. Some selected more than one, and we tracked it. We had a professional evaluator onboard, and this guidebook was created from them. There's comments about the, about the project from the team leads that were involved. There was project evaluations, project observations, essential questions. So, if you get a chance, go to that website, download the PDF, and take a look at it. Now, when you get to this webpage, on the right-hand side, it's actually in HT, that's actually in HTML as well. So, there is also a lot of resources on sustainable schools. So, you'll see two sections of it. One, guidebook and PDF, and also on the right-hand side of the webpage, which has a lot of links on it as well. So, I just wanted to share that information. It was intentionally designed for school board members and actually green teams of And Donna Drews actually wrote this, and this is actually a statement from Donna Drews from Sustainable Jersey. Because this was actually going on prior to the launch of Sustainable Jersey for Schools.
I'd say that we are familiar with, considering two of us served...
Hi, John. Two of us actually served on our Town Green Team before the one for schools was launched, so we're somewhat familiar with that.
Oh, good. Okay, so, just a little bit about, you probably know this, but Sustainable Jersey for Schools launched in 2014. In 2015, 2016, there's over 400 schools, 150 districts registered, which is incredible. 59 schools were earned certification, and they're expecting double to possibly triple that number next year, 2000, well, actually, this year, 2016 workshop. We don't know that yet, but it's looking pretty good based on the numbers that I keep on rolling in. This is probably one of the most successful projects and certification programs that we've seen in the state. And by the way, we're actually creating a certification in STEM as well, actually STEAM, which may resemble Sustainable Jersey for School, but we're a little ways away from that. Since this was so successful, you might want to do this with, you know, STEAM as well. So, has anybody heard of the New Jersey Green Program of Study?
Nope.
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 Okay, so, you are a, are you a K-12 district? And I apologize if I don't know that.
We're K-8.
K-8, okay. So, actually, this would apply to probably your seventh, eighth grade. This really was, the New Jersey Green Program of Study was, again, a pilot project that I've been affiliated with since the beginning. This is a Department of Education project that we took over the management of about two years ago. This is for career and technical education and comprehensive high schools. However, this website on the, and since it's about sustainability, there's three pathways, sustainable design, construction, and energy. These lesson plans that have been developed over a series of five years, you can, you can have your teachers take a look at these and modify them, and modify them so they can be used in the, at the very least, they can be used at middle school. There will be some modification because they were designed for high school, but just as a really good resource, lesson plans have already been approved by the Department of Ed, and can be modified by your teachers to actually take a look at this and implement in these areas. The construction part really is heavily on the building, so if you're doing a facility upgrade, and if you're looking at greening your building, their lesson plans are already done. This is also approved on Sustainable Jersey for Schools. You can actually get credit for the education for sustainability. So, just wanted to bring this to your attention, that this is another resource that could be modified. And the website, by the way, is NJGreenProgramOfStudy.org. Apologize for not putting the website right there. Anything that I share and you do not have, or I don't share a website, please email me, and I will provide as much as possible to you. School Boards Association and NJBOE were honored by the U.S. Green Building Council of New Jersey Chapter for the Green Program of Study. We were very proud of that. So, it's been recognized by the U.S. Green Building Council. By the way, that's another resource for you. As you're going through your sustainability process, and you really wanted to take a look at, you know, the actual built environment, there are a number of experts that actually work with and are members of the U.S. Green Building Council, and probably can assist and answer any questions, because these are the folks who actually are related to and work in the industry of the built environment, schools included. Everybody hearing okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounded great, actually.
So, in terms of a resource for you, if you take a look at, there's, there's two things that I want to bring your attention here. Through LNJ, the Educational Leadership Foundation, we partner with the U.S. Green Building Council. And this is, this is an event that is run during the summer for kids. And your kids, if you choose to take them, can actually participate in this. It's a great day. We call it SPEEDLE, which is Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design at the beach. Kids learn about green building, they learn about solar energy, and it's right on the beach. So, I know it would be difficult for you to spend a day at the beach, but I'm just suggesting that if you want to get out and have some fun, take your kids to the beach. It's a great day. And you learn, kids go on all rides afterwards, but they have to go through some training at first. And Rider University is also, we're partnered with them. We ran our first student symposium. Unfortunately, it's for high school students, but they actually might take middle school students as well this year, because it was very successful last year. I can let you know whether they're going to do that, or I don't know if they're going to keep it at high school level. So, kids showed up, 50 kids showed up at Rider University, and they learned a lot about So, not sure if you know this or not, but we had a U.S. Green Building Council Green Fellow placed at our headquarters for two years, which really, she was part of the Sustainable Schools Project and all, a lot of the other things that we were developing. This was a grant, a $300,000 grant that was provided by Bristol Myers Squibb. It was a great opportunity for us, and she was a resource for, you know, for the schools. We have now since replaced her with a sustainability architect, who is actually a, who's really called the Lead Faculty for the U.S. Green Building Council. So, we do have an expert who actually works with School Boards Association, who can actually assist you with greening every building, really an expert in the built environment. We do have, currently, we have a sustainability intern. He's from Rider University. Is anybody familiar with Angie, the Alliance for New Jersey's Environmental Education?
No.
If you are, if you're not, then, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
No, we definitely aren't.
You are?
No.
Okay, good.
No, no.
Please explain, no, we're not familiar.
Yeah, we're not, sorry.
We're feeling like we don't know much.
Anyway, the Alliance for New Jersey Environmental Education, they have a conference every year. They are consistent experts in the environmental education. They have a lot of resources for schools, you just have to ask the right question. So, green ribbon school, we are on, and I serve on the selection committee right now. This is something that we call the Academy Awards of Sustainability. A little more rigorous to get, but when you're ready, I would strongly suggest taking a look at this application as well. It is an awards recognition program, and we only select five schools if they are eligible per year to do. There are a limited amount of numbers of schools that we can actually, that are federal year, we will actually accept.
And John, not to interrupt, but just to give us an idea, like, what are some of the qualifications for that? How does it, how does it work? Just briefly.
You know, the Green Ribbon School has three pillars, and the three pillars really resemble, there's a lot of crossover, very similar to Sustainable Jersey for Schools, and very similar to Eco Schools. And I'll give you an example. So, if you're focused on Sustainable Jersey for Schools, many of those actions will count towards Green Ribbon Schools. It's just a matter of filling out the application.
Okay.
So, the three pillars are, the first, it's like energy, carbon footprint, which, again, is in Sustainable Jersey for Schools. The second one is on the environment and health, and the third one is on education for sustainability. There's also some STEM embedded in that as well. So, it's just structured differently. This came out before Sustainable Jersey for Schools, but there is so much related and crossover. School Boards Association is actually, one of the things that our intern is doing right now, is actually putting together a matrix that will show side by side the Green Ribbon Schools, Sustainable Jersey for Schools, Eco Schools, and LEED, Leadership in Environmental, Energy and Environmental Design. So, that's a good thing, because right now, it doesn't exist. And, you know, some people are getting confused, like, which one we should go for. Well, most people are going for Sustainable Jersey for Schools, but you can do both.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
Nope. I think we're okay.
We are trying to walk the walk and talk the talk. And one of our commitments at Jersey School Boards Association is actually trying to get LEED certification for our building. We're going for LEED Silver. And I'll tell you what, it's been a challenge. And some of the challenges that we've been facing is actually behavior modification internal to the association. People are used to, and you're going to find this at your school as well, is that when you change things, sometimes it's difficult for some people to just do things a little How many people went to School Boards Association Workshop last year?
Yep. I did.
Two.
Two of us.
Well, one of the things that we've been trying to do, and it's been actually improving for the last several years, or the last three years, actually, is we have a Green Command Center. This year, it's going to be a little different. It's going to be sustainable, sustainable and healthier, healthy schools. We have a lot of exhibitors that go in there. We have a lot of workshops, actually sessions, that are really focused on sustainability. So, if you haven't been there, and you do go, you can actually get credit, not only board credit, but also some of the, all of the sustainability workshops that are offered there actually provide you points in the leadership category for Sustainable Jersey for Schools. And I'll give you an example of the, we also open this up to Buildings and Grounds staff. So, if you're a facility director, or you're a Buildings and Grounds person, does go here, they can get credit as well from the Buildings and Grounds Association. One of the presentations I did last year, I had about 100 people in the room, and about 60 of them were Buildings and Grounds personnel. There's a lot of interest from facility directors, and those folks who are managing the building from a physical plant's perspective, are very interested in learning all they can. So, it's actually nice to see a good mix of board members, superintendents, VAs, and now, facility directors are showing up, which is a good thing. So, it's a good, you know, it's good that you have that green team mentality, because just one person learning about sustainability is not going to do. Just want to make a couple distinctions here, because, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but you hear green, you hear sustainability, you hear education for sustainability. I just wanted to just have a couple of distinctions. Sustainability, this is really based on a simple principle. Everything that we need for our survival and well-being depends on, either directly or indirectly, in our natural environment. Sustainability creates and maintains the conditions under which humans and nature can exist in productive harmony. And really, it is about our future generations. So, if there's interest here, and people move along, and we get all the schools in New Jersey that actually are focused on sustainableizing our schools, we can actually help the environment, help our kids, help ourselves. And this is about human health. Education for Sustainability, you're going to see this in Sustainable Jersey for Schools under those categories to get credits for, and this is what it is. Okay, so, now it's your turn. Define a green or sustainable school. What do you think? If I was there, I'd be picking on somebody.
I would think that, what I would be, you know, renewable energy and efficient use of energy, you know, reduction of energy costs.
Anybody else?
I would just, I would think a healthy environment in terms of air, water, you know, the actual envelope of the building in terms of it being, kind of fitting in and, you know, handling things like the water, and just, just being, you know, kind of part of the environment.
Anybody else?
Solar panels, efficient insulation.
Efficient doors, windows, that kind of thing.
Okay, I'll give you a basic definition of a green school. I'm involved with a lot of people from the Department of Environmental Protection and EPA, and some other associations, or organizations around the country. And we do, we talk about climate change quite a bit. But the climate change debate, so to speak, even though the science has proven that it's really not a debate, was never going anywhere. So, when you frame the question as the sustainability or green schools is just something that's going to do this, who does not want that? This is conducive to learning while saving energy, resources, and money. I don't really, I don't know too many people that have an argument against that. Of course, when we do these things, it does impact climate change, it does reduce our carbon footprint, it does create healthier environments, and everyone wins.
John, I'm going to interrupt you for just one second. We had some of the public come in. I just want to let them know what's going on, so they're aware.
Sure.
Yeah, bear with me one second. So, tonight, we are having a training. It's a 90-minute training for the board on sustainable issues for the schools in our district, and also STEM, science, technology in our schools as well. So, it's going to be about another hour that we're going to be here. You're obviously more than welcome to stay. We are going to continue our meeting after this, but I just wanted to let you know that, what you're seeing, basically. Okay, John, thank you. Go ahead.
So, basically, in order to achieve that, it takes education, and more people that learn about what we're doing, or what you're doing in the individual school, the more that you can share with the community, your staff people, and everybody related to the school, and then put them into action and collaboration. We have found that one of the most successful, these are the most successful ingredients that you can have when you're actually sustainableizing a school and/or a community. Realistically, the school is really the epicenter for sustainability. Whatever you do in your school can ripple out into the, to their community, and really has a large impact. And that collabor- And that collaboration is wonderful, because then the more people you can collaborate with, bring more resources to your school. And communicating, and the board communicating what your intentions are and why you're doing what you're doing is critical for a board of education. So how can you, how do you view a whole school sustainability? Talk about a green school, but what do you think when you hear whole school sustainability? Kind of mentioned it a little bit earlier. Is there anything else that anybody can add?
If you don't want things competing against each other, these guys online, not energy wise.
Yeah, you don't want to be competing, that's for sure. You want to be working in harmony with the systems of the building and the community members that are involved and the staff people involved in it. I'm going to show you this slide right here and I really like this graphic. Can you, can everybody see this okay?
Yes.
Yes.
It's good. So this is from the U.S. Green Building Council's Center for Green Schools. And this is out of a document, which is again, a free download of their organization. And it's called the Whole School Sustainability Framework. And this really sums it up why you're doing what you're doing and how it could be done successfully. So the, if you could take a look at it in the middle of sustainability, when you look at the physical place. So you have the healthy system. So if one system is not healthy, again, somebody mentioned competing or something is actually missing. So you can have, you know, rest of efficiency, but if you're not doing anything with water or air, then you're actually not having a sustainable physical place. And also engaging in active design. That doesn't just mean that you have designed by a new building. It could also mean, you know, you're looking at renovations or remodeling or just actually altering what you have or reorganizing is also, you can do that as well. So, turn on some lights here, folks, sorry. Organizational culture, your vision and mission and alignment, and that's really kind of where it starts from you as board members, is actually setting the goals and looking at sustainable practices in terms of strategic plans, policy setting, and interdepartmental learning. Everybody needs to be on the same page or at least have some general concepts about what you're trying to do in terms of whole school sustainability. And have that really communicated well from one department to the next, because if somebody's on another, on a separate page and doesn't understand why they're doing what they're doing, then you have that miscommunication, lack of understanding, and then it causes that either competition or just lack of why are we doing what we're doing and what's the impact and who's going to benefit. And then of course, I think, and this is my opinion, but I also, you know, hear a lot about this around the state, is that every single thing you can do is, can be connected to the educational programming that you have in the classrooms. You can have that charismatic champion, who could be a teacher, could be a board member, superintendent. You can have more than one charismatic champions. In fact, I would strongly recommend it. We've also found that if you have one person who's leading the charge in the school and that one person goes away, it collapses. So that's why that if you take a look at the organizational culture piece and you put in these, the policies and the strategic plan and the board goals that you can have, it doesn't matter who's in charge of the school or who's leading the school, you will always have that built into the culture of the school, because that's just what you're going to do for practices on an everyday basis. So again, I'd strongly recommend going to the Center for Green Schools. They have a resource page there. This document is a free download. It's a great read. It's one of the better documents I've seen come out that really explains whole school sustainability and why you're doing what you're doing. Now, there was several years ago, and even still a lot today, a lot of schools are just focusing on energy. And now with all these certifications coming out, including Sustainable Jersey for Schools, it really sets the stage for, you can't just look at energy. Energy is a big one, but it's not the only thing. And that's why the Whole School Sustainability Framework is so important, because it connects the dots to everything that you need to move forward and maximize the benefits when you're, you know, moving in the world of sustainability. Now, doesn't, you know, it takes some time. Sometimes, you know, again, changing the culture of a school takes a little while. These are just behaviors that, you know, eventually will become standard operating Anybody have any questions on this?
Hey, John, just one quick question. When we talk about sustainability, you talk about some of the districts that you work with that have done really well with it. Just, I mean, this is not the whole piece of it, but just to get an idea, is this something that typically costs districts money or is it something that, you know, based upon some savings, they're able to end up positive or where do they end up from a financial perspective? Just so we can plan appropriately.
Well, I mean, again, it starts with some policies and strategic plan and you can look at the things that you're doing right now and make sure that you're doing everything you can efficiently. And I'll give you an example. So the Board of Public Utilities, the New Jersey Clean Energy Program came out with a program called Teach. And they had, I forget how many schools were on, it was like 50 schools involved in it. It was a pilot program. And they were focused just on energy because, you know, Board of Public Utilities, that's what they do. And they, the schools that did that were only interested in behavior modification in the energy realm. And they were saving, the schools were saving anywhere between 12 and about 16% on our energy bills just by behavior modification. That was no cost to the district. It was just behavior. So you could do some things like that that are absolutely no cost, just changing the way that you do business. Like again, green cleaning. You want a healthy environment, you switch to green cleaning supplies, you get rid of the five or 10 or 15 different chemicals that are in your building that are harmful and toxic, and maybe you have maybe one or two cleaners that do it all. So these products do exist, so you lower your cost just by looking at something that works just as well and is more sustainable and healthier for the school. So it really does come down to like green procurement and actually what you purchase, how you purchase, and how efficient your operations are. One of the studies that was in the, one school, what was it, Sweets, Sweetsboro? I think it was Sweetsboro who was in there. And their measurable objective was actually looking at waste, paper reduction and more efficient just ways to, you know, reduce paper. They went to a paperless backpack and it took six months before, they were sending notices out to the parents and the community, saying that at this certain time it was going to start, giving everybody warning that this is happening. When they did that, they tracked it for over a year and the school saved $17,000 in paper reduction just by one move. Now, they did not calculate the energy that it took to print the paper, if they were still printing. They did not calculate how much ink it saved as well, because we know that ink can be a huge expense. And they did not calculate how much people power or time, labor it took to stuff those backpacks. So they were saving and they weren't even measured. So anything you do, having a measurable objective, something that you can, you know, you can validate and you can say that whatever changes you're making, you're going to be saving something, whether it's resources, money, or hopefully both, and making the school more efficient. Now, those dollars that you save can be reinvested and that's just a strategy. So when you're looking at doing anything, where's that money going from the savings? And benchmarking is extremely important. So if you're looking at doing anything, whether you're going paperless, benchmark it. Where, from that point you started, track it for a year and see how much money you save. And then that money, if you save, hopefully you will, can be reinvested. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. No, thank you. And where does ESIP fit into all this?
Well, your ESIP is the energy. That's more, that's really just, yeah, does it fit in? Sure, that's part of your energy plan. Energy Saving Improvement Plan is, you know, is something that if you've done the audit and enter the ESIP, and you're going to hire somebody to go ahead and do that, those are, some of those are a little bit more investments, but a lot of these investments that you make in terms of the energy equipment, like loss or color investments, like HVAC and things like that, lighting, those investments will have a return on investment, because they're going to be more efficient. Lighting has a return on investment for probably about two, two and a half years, depending on the type of lighting you go with. So anything you invest in, when it comes to sustainableizing your school, you're going to have a return on your investment. Fossil fuel systems right now, you just keep paying out electric bills, heating bills, et cetera.
Thank you.
So we talked about the physical plant and just continuation of this. These are some of the areas that in school, the physical plant, including the curriculum of environmental education, that can be connected to everything you do. Energy efficiency again is what most folks go for first, because it's very measurable, it's very visible, it's immediate, you can see the return. Recycling has been challenging. Have you done anything with recycling in your school and what have been your successes or your challenges in the recycling world?
We do it. We have challenges, definitely, but there's recycling around buildings. We've never measured it or weighed it and see, see how effective it is, but it is part of our, it's part of our culture here at least, that kids are recycling and they want to recycle.
So have you, have you done anything with reduction of the materials that come into your school so that you don't have it going out on the back end?
We are. We are actually doing that through the Sustainable Jersey Plan in one school, one, we have, we're kind of doing it as a pilot with one school. We registered the district, but one school's really taking off and hopefully we can expand that to the other two schools next year.
It's actually smart that you're doing it as a pilot. You see, it's when you're showing success, some folks bite off more than they can chew and that's not, not good, because if you can't handle it, then it's like, why are we doing this? So it's good that you're doing it as a pilot. The other thing too, you should be looking at is changing your contracts with your waste management companies? Because you're actually, and I don't know if you're doing, you may already, and I apologize, you may already be doing that.
We don't do it. We don't do it. The town does it for us.
Oh, the town does it. You know, there's quite a few districts that the town actually does it. You can still measure it. Somebody's paying for that, whether it's you directly or through their taxes, through your town, but you can still reduce.
Sure.
So it's a good thing to do. And what I was going to suggest, that if you had your own, you know, contracts and you would renegotiate your contracts with your waste haulers, you know, because if you're having less materials coming in and you have a reduction plan, you're not going to have as much going out the back end. And so you should be renegotiating your contracts with waste haulers. But since your town takes it, you know, either way, it goes to the town and you can show a reduction, that's great. This is a great opportunity for kids to get involved in measuring what comes in, what goes out. And one of the lessons that I'll refer back to the green program study is called lifecycle assessment. And you can have students do a lifecycle assessment lesson plan that actually tracks on something that comes in, gets used, and either is repurposed or actually is recycled. And so there's a great lesson that you can actually measure the amount of trash and waste that you have, and it doesn't matter what it is. So of course, we'll talk about transportation and buses a little bit later, but this again is an area that you can save a great deal of dollars here by just altering routes, rescheduling things and timing, anti-idling, things like that. Biodiesel, and then you're talking about electric, electric buses. So now I mentioned that. So what's your interest in electric, in electric buses? Where did you hear about that and who else did you hear or know the school's doing it?
Yeah, well, actually, I had read an article that in 2015 Secaucus had gotten a grant, about $85,000, to start with two electric buses. Honestly, I don't know if they did it, but this was from an article from last year.
Did you say 200?
No, two buses.
Oh, two buses. I was going to say, wow, that's aggressive.
Yep.
200 buses. I don't even know the school that's doing it yet, so.
We looked into, we actually talked to that superintendent who's at Bootham now, and they did do it. The, the company we reached out to about purchasing buses said that the vendor that was creating, was making these hybrid buses has put it on hold, has suspended the program temporarily or indefinitely, we're not sure, but that's, that's the latest we heard of. But there, you know, there's biodiesel, the biodiesel ones too, and propane too, they talked about.
Yeah. There is, I mean, when I was, when I was, the last school I was at was when very high school, I ran an electric vehicle program. So I actually know a little bit about electric vehicles only because I ran a program for two years. It was not a bus, but nevertheless, the systems were the same. Battery, charging, we were running a vehicle and we were charging it by solar. So it was completely off the grid and that was a school project done by kids. So for me, I'm looking at the industry, the world, the automotive industry, and we could be doing that. We can do it as students and as a team of teachers and students, I'm sure the automotive industry can figure that out. But, you know, we're not there yet. So water efficiency, same thing. If you could reduce the amount of water in your school, it's going to save money. You're also talking about sewage. More water you put in, more has to go out. Indoor air quality, which is a big one. Everybody's concerned about this from hidden, safe, that top in your school. Green cleaning actually contributes that. So if you're moving into a green cleaning world, you're actually going to improve the indoor air quality. So there's lots of things you can take a look at from the physical plant and with Sustainable Jersey for Schools and other resources out there, there are lots of resources that'll help you get there. Potential benefactors of a green school, this is kind of a no-brainer, the students, the faculty, and the taxpayers. If you're running an efficient school, you're going to save some money. And again, I say that when you drop green school in the community, it actually ripples out and some of the kids are going to be hounding their parents about recycling and about turning off lights. We've seen that happening all over the place. And so actually what happens is now they're starting to, you know, take it home and now the folks who live in the town are actually green their homes and they're actually starting to like turn off lights and save energy. And then kids are having them look at their utility bills. And so it's really nice to see the kids taking what you do. And that's why I always emphasize that really whatever you do in terms of every system in the school, the kids learn from that. And everything they could do can relate it back to STEM or other writing or any other content area that you could possibly imagine. So I think we talked about it a little bit. I think I know where you kind of stand right now. So have you done anything in your school right now that you actually saw measurable results in savings? Or are you two, are you still too new into it?
Actually, tonight, the board is going to approve the contract with Honeywell to, actually for the financing end of the, of the ESIP program. So we're about six steps into an eight-step process. Today's, today's the day where they approve the funding and then we should be breaking ground in August on our project. So we're doing a $1.9 million project through ESIP that will be funded, obviously, through the savings.
Hmm, okay.
We're not at the point where we're actually seeing that yet. We're at the point where we're getting ready to.
Well, you have to make the investment and then you see efficiencies later. Well, that's good, you took a step in the right direction. So is there going to be an energy management or monitoring system in that?
Yes, there has to be.
That's good, that's good. Because then you know exactly what you're doing and where, you know, there's some breakdown and that energy, I really believe in energy management and monitoring systems, even water. Sometimes you don't know, you know, if there's breakdown on a system like that. And a lot of these energy systems also track water as well. I don't know if Honeywell's doing that for you.
Water is part of ours.
Water, good, that's good. Real smart, you did that. Okay, so, you know, just a basic map here, say a road, a roadmap or a road to a green district. So you've already committed to a green district, you're going to engage your stakeholders, hopefully as many as possible to actually, you know, have some input, positive input. You've already assessed at least the landscape, if you haven't done that, you know, and I look at more of a sustainability audit. So right now you've done an energy audit, but a sustainability audit actually encompasses all the other resources and everything that you're doing in the school. It's also very smart to do. Chart the court, the chart the course means that you're just really tracking everything that you're doing and making sure that you are, what you're doing is measurable and you're saving. And of course, you've done some of that with the research, the financing. Now, there are some grants, like through Sustainable Jersey and others as well. Education is really, really important, because that builds the capacity for you to continue doing that work and you can actually maximize your savings as well. Experiential learning, I mentioned that through kids and having your teachers actually deliver and students actually be part of your green team and doing lesson plans about the building systems, it's really a nice thing to do. System upgrades, you're already doing that, that's good. Don't forget to celebrate your success. You know, reward to people who are involved in it and actually part of the savings. How long of an ROI is okay? That depends. So some of the things you could do are, like I mentioned earlier, are no cost or very low cost. What do you think a low-cost investment is?
Changing behaviors.
Changing what?
Behavior.
Behavior? Yeah, there might be a cost in that because, you know, sometimes you might have to educate, you might have to actually invest some things, not high dollar, but you're going to get a really, really, you know, a lot out of a small investment, changing behavior and actually educating. How about a moderate? What's a moderate investment? What's a moderate investment?
Replacing lighting.
Lighting, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys don't, you guys don't need me. We're going. And a high, of course, you know, HVAC systems, things like that. And of course, you're going to have to do this cost-benefit analysis for each one and make a decision whether it's something you want to do or not, or can afford it.
That's one of the biggest parts of this is actually in the ESIP. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the ESIP. This is my second one going through. And it's, it's, it is about sustainability, but it has to pay for itself no matter what. So some of the things that we'd like to put in there aren't in there. Like we did look at solar, we looked at any type of, you know, sustainable energy sources like that, and it just wasn't going to pay for itself through the program. So those kinds of things aren't in our ESIP. We just don't have the space or the size district to actually do that through ESIP. And the, the water management system was looked at, but I don't believe it's in our final proposal. Just because again, like, I'll give you an example. I think this is interesting about the ESIP. When, when we, when we looked at it, the cost to put the, the cost to put those room sensors in a room with LED lighting, it won't pay for itself because the energy savings from the LED, LED lighting, because the use of the energy is so low that it won't pay for the switch. So we're getting the LED, but we're not getting the switch. Does that make sense?
It does.
So it's interesting. It's, it's, it's important. You know, the sustainability part's important, the green part's important, but through the ESIP, it has to pay for itself. And, you know, we go through back and forth. We'd like to put air conditioning here, we'd like to do that. But those things don't pay for itself. It would work if you were in Florida and you're running those kind of air conditioners like 24/7. Maybe, maybe a new efficient air conditioning would, would pay for itself. But when you're in New Jersey and you're running it, you know, 20, 30 times a year, upgrading the air conditioning system is even going to be close to paid for from the offset from the energy usage.
Right, right. Yeah, and those, those decisions are tough decisions to make because everybody wants air conditioning on those hot days, but it's not going to pay for itself. It's a budget thing. Those are difficult decisions. Well, you know, a lot of schools go right to solar. I was in one of the districts, I won't mention the name. I did a presentation like this, but I was face to face and I pulled in a parking lot and there, there was probably like a 1.3 megawatt canopy solar system in a parking lot, right? And I was like, ah, this is, that's great. Walked in, they were not doing any conservation in the school at all. So what they did is they jumped right to solar, which I call the eco bling. So, you know, instead of looking at conservation first, no cost, low cost investments, they went right for the solar. And solar works great. And yes, there's a return on investment. No matter if it's 15, 20 years, depending on how you finance or if you're into a PPA. But you have to have conservation in the school, turn out lights, you know, behavior modification. If you're not doing that simultaneously, you're going to have a longer period of time where you're going to pay for that system. You know, no energy is free. Just because it comes from the sun still doesn't mean it doesn't cost you money. So conservation has to be part of that. Can't just put solar on roofs or in a parking lot or on a field and expect it to work great when you're not doing that in the school. So, you know, you know, again, somebody sold them on a system, it was great that they did that. I'm glad they went solar. But you gotta have those other things that are, you know, miss, you know, an absolute necessity when you put solar in. But you're probably already familiar with this through the Clean Energy Program. There are some incentives that you can, can get if you're not. The Clean Energy Program, the website really explains it quite well. And they have representatives that'll come out to your school and talk to you about that. You're already into an ESIP. And of course, we mentioned behavior modification, which in my opinion is the first place and a really great place to start. There's the website for the Clean Energy Program. There's also resources at desireusa.org. And of course, on the Sustainable Jersey for school, they have their resource section. Have all of you had a chance to go through the, the actions and all the resources that are actually in the 17 categories? Because it's quite impressive in terms of the resources. If you haven't, I strongly encourage you to do so. And actually go through some of the things that your school actually want to do. And read through each resource section because there's a lot of it.
On May 9th, our two Sustainable Jersey coordinators are going to come and update the board and tell them the status on where our, our application is. So you guys will have more information that day.
And, and two of us, through the exposure through the town, the town Green Committee, had some exposure when we, when Denville went for its bronze certification last year.
Oh, great, right. Yeah, it's, it's an impressive website. They have just a ton of resources there and very well explained. So for those, for those of you in the room who have not been on that website, you know, take some time and actually go through some of the resources on there and the actions. Are you involved in the ACES program?
We are. We are. We're in ACES already.
Are you aware of ACES Plus?
Now, what's, what's ACES Plus?
I'll take that as a no?
No.
No.
That's a no.
Okay. All right, ACES Plus is renewables, renewable and energy conservation, energy efficiency. Something that they kicked off, uh, school boards, uh, managed by Gable Associates, uh, actually two years ago, a year and a half. And it really is kind of a, a spin-off of, you know, taking a look at the ACES, which actually provides fossil fuel aggregate, you know, buying in bulk and really making, onsite solar, onsite efficiency and consultation. And all you have to do is pass a resolution and they will act in your behalf. So it's something that, you know, some schools are actually getting involved in now because it's a relatively new program. And by the way, the person who is managing the ACES Plus program, Mark Warner, was at Sustainable Jersey for years. And now he's with Gable Associates managing the ACES Plus program. And I know Mark is really, really smart when it comes to energy. So that is something else that school boards is, you know, really trying to promote and have schools. When they're looking at alternative energy and energy efficiency, they'd actually look to get into the ACES Plus program.
So John, this is part, alternative sourcing of energy, but then also they look at possibility of doing stuff onsite? I mean, it's, is it, it could be both or one or the other?
Yes, it's actually both.
Okay.
Right, it's also both. Onsite and, you know, they'll look at efficiencies as well. So they, they act in your behalf, you know, representing school boards association, so. I think it's a really well-designed program if you're looking at renewables and you're looking at energy efficiency, so. This is just one of the projects that they've done. So what do you think about actually installing solar panels on a field?
Do I like it?
Yes.
No.
Good. Either do I.
We don't have a field like that.
We don't have enough.
Yeah, we don't have.
That's why you don't like it. You don't have a field to put it on. And some roofs are not conducive to that. So, and, you know, I mean, one of the better ways might be a little more pricey is actually putting them in an already built environment. That's my preference, is like a parking lot. It's already paved. So put it over because solar canopies actually serve two purposes, collecting, using that space for solar gain and also shading for cars.
Is there any solar paddle size that, you know, tips to the point where it damages the environment? Because we had that, I don't know, maybe about five years ago, we had that solar farm debacle out there. I think it was in California, out, out west there in, in the desert. And, you know, a, a lot of wildlife was destroyed from the heat that they generated, especially birds. So I think it eventually went bankrupt and, and out of commission. So is there, any studies been done on that as to, you know, where it's safe for the environment and where things would get heated up too much from the reflection?
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, the, the solar panels are actually angled at a very specific angle that captured solar directly or as direct as possible without, you know, tracking the sun. In terms of reflection, I mean, it might have reflected some light in a way that hit some landscape that, I don't know, is it possible? I haven't heard of that. The solar panels themselves really don't generate, they're not that kind, not solar or electric. And even if the other ones, the Mesocall water panels are actually very well insulated and just take the heat away. So no, I have not heard that. But just like any other technology, I mean, there's consequences to, you know, putting them on a field like this. You know, I heard of, one of the panels, there's a system like this. Anybody heard of Duke Farms?
Yes.
Uh, Duke Farms is a, is a great place. I was just there. I stayed there for three days. We had a workshop there. And they have a solar panel, or they have a solar array like this. But they were bringing in goats to actually, you know, instead of mowing the lawn or trying to go around the panels, they were actually bringing in animals that would eat the grass around the panels. And that was their solution. So it's a change of how they're doing business. They, you know, put these solar panels up, but they've eliminated some of the maintenance by machines because it's impacting the carbon footprint. So, but I haven't heard any solar panels actually harming any animals or any other. There's some other talk about if they give off electromagnetic radiation and I've heard very little about that as well, in terms of harmful to humans being close in proximity because they generate electricity. So far, I've heard very little in terms of the impact on the environment except for disposal of the panels. They are made and they do have chemicals in, and so their end of life is actually important and how they get disposed of. But that really goes for anything that we make, is we should be designing and engineering things that are sustainable, not unsustainable. Don't design it, in other words, for the dump and don't design it that is toxic. So, you know, these are all lessons that we can teach our kids. You know, hey, you're designing a solar panel, what actually goes into it? And these are debates that they can have. Is solar energy really the answer? Or is it wind or fuel cells or some other, you know, alternative energy source? We have the same conversations going on with wind energy. And we're talking about, hey, a lot of people talk about the wind generators in Atlantic City killing birds. Like I know the director there and the director of the ACUA said that only one bird in the amount of years, all that time has been into a blade. And that bird came in a month and a half after its migratory pattern. So they thought something was wrong with the bird. But, you know, some people don't want wind generators because they make too much noise or they're unattractive looking or they kill birds. So mirrored glass buildings kill thousands of birds per year. So this is great conversation for your kids. Actually look at what are the consequences and benefits for alternative energy in any form. If that makes any sense. Okay, we talked about this a little bit, creating your goals. Do you have any board goals right now that you've actually really sustainabilized?
Well, we're in the, next year, we're going to start, in the beginning of the year, school boards is going to be our consultant and we're going to have a strategic plan. And I would expect that one of the goals in the strategic plan dealt, deals with sustainability.
Good. That's, that's good. That's a good way to go. So how about policies? Do you have a school board policy that's sustainable yet?
Nope, not currently.
Okay, so I'm going to just click on this. We're going to jump to, we have a sample policy, just in case you want to use one. Again, as an example. And, you know, I'm just going to go through this very quickly. I mean, I can send you a copy of this. And this may help at least start the conversation. You can do it your way, unique to your place. But we put this together to share with board. And we talk about a district green team. We look at recycling. Now, you can have separate policies that deal just with recycling and be very comprehensive with that. Or this one we really made as an example, just to take a look at, you know, the various areas, maybe not everything. But a lot of the areas are built into here for your consideration. Again, the business practices here as well. We have a bunch of things in here that actually identify these things, implementation. So this is for your reading pleasure, when you have time.
Yeah, John, if you could send us that, that would be great. Also, can you send us the copy of this presentation?
I could do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Purchasing green, wind, solar biofuels. This actually is a Sustainable Jersey for schools. You can get points for purchasing green energy. And of course, the audit, you've already done this because you're into ESIP, you would happily have done that anyway. But I'd strongly recommend that if you're going to do your sustainability audit, it just isn't just the energy alone. It's really the maintenance, purchasing, what you're doing to waste, indoor quality, cleaning. You can do an audit on each and every one of these categories. Glad that you did one on energy, but, you know, there are, there are other systems that you can spend some time on doing audits as well. So we mentioned these before, the certification platforms, of course, the most popular one, obviously the Sustainable Jersey Schools. Lead for Schools is really focused on the built environment. No education, not really per se in Lead for Schools, but it's focused on five categories in the building. Uh, and Green Ribbon School, I talked about three, three pillars. There's 16 Jersey winners. It's 2011, 2012, eco schools. Very popular, there's probably 185 to 189 schools that are registered. Really more focused on teachers and classroom-based than anything else, but they do look at the entire building, but it's usually run by teachers. All these are free except for Lead for Schools. It is a fee-based if you really went for certification, if you were doing either a new building or a renovation or a model. And of course, Sustainable Jersey is free as well. I mentioned the Center for Green Schools. This is what the webpage, resource page looks like. Great resources here. You know, it's the centerforgreenschools.org. And if you go to resources, there are, I don't know, there's probably 20 or 25 documents that are downloadable, roadmap through Green Campus, powering down as a PowerPoint, which gives you a variety of different examples of how you can actually power down and save money for your school. State of our schools report, all kinds of great, great resources here. I'm going to give you an example of a couple of green goals. And they're all going to be based on this triple bottom line. We have the social, economic and environmental, you know, categories here. So let's take a look at this real quick. Because of course, as you know, once you set a goal, so you put a goal into practice at the rest of the school, the superintendent, principal and everybody else who's on that will actually make that happen and write the very specifics on how to follow that goal. But if you don't have anything that has anything to do with sustainability in it, it is a goal and it could be a good one, but if you want it, and if your school is into sustainability and you really want to sustainabilize your school, a goal's a great place to start. Again, just another example here. One more. And of course, you'd have to define what efficient operations and maintenance is. Okay, so from your green goals, you can create actions that creates savings that can be reinvested and result in improved school environment. Just a couple of examples of some schools that are really focused mostly on energy. Another ESIP. And you're going to see a lot of solar, a lot of energy in these. Lots of schools are doing. Lots of schools are doing that. This is what they were doing at first, is really focusing on energy. Now it's much different. Some, a lot of schools are actually looking at whole school sustainability because it's more impact. Medford Township, I actually wanna spend a minute on Medford Township because there's a couple of things that they've done exceptionally well. And one is they've done energy really well, solar and energy efficiency. They've also have a biodiesel fleet, where they converted, I think, almost all their buses over. They, their facility director, Joe Billick, is probably one of the more forward-thinking facility directors in the world of energy and fleet. Once you save the school a lot of money doing it. So we actually have sustainability services. Right now, we're running five. Um, our last one is actually this Friday. Uh, it's called our Sustainability Working Sessions. They are free. And it really covers the seventeen categories of Sustainable Jersey the schools. We'd also have field service reps and other people and myself, and some subject matter experts who are, you know, green building experts will come to your school and consult if you see the need. So let's go to the original questions, uh, Mr. Forte actually asked. We were looking at for electric vehicles. So there is, for me, there is not a lot of information about alternative energy vehicles, especially electric buses. But what I do know, are you, I don't believe you're in the PSCNG area for energy?
No, we're not.
You're not? So what PSCNG did in their era is they partnered with Sonnet Edison, and they were actually providing, they were looking for two or three pilot schools. And at that point, that was about six months ago, and I could not get involved in that because it was Sonnet Edison, because we were school boards. But what I found really interesting about that is PSCNG was trying to program, but they actually weren't going to put two or three buses in these pilot schools to see how they were gonna operate. Now, if you really wanted to actually find out what that program was, I am sure that PSCNG would be more than happy to talk to you and at least provide some information, if not this Sonnet Edison, I can provide that information. But on average, they were talking about these electric vehicles that saved about ten K in one year on fuel cost, which is pretty good. So if you were going to invest in a new bus, and you wanted it to be electric, and you had a means to recharge it, then that would be a good option. Most of these electric buses, from what I can determine, is about eighty to a hundred mile range per charge. And of course, they apply to your fleet, points for Sustainable Jersey for schools.
John, was that ten thousand dollar savings, a, a net savings over the cost of electricity to charge the, uh, the bus?
Well, they didn't calculate in that is how much electricity it actually costs to charge the bus. That was actually the fuel cost. So if you're offsetting a fuel cost, of course, there will be a charge for, um, electric for charging the battery pack.
Okay, and, um, maybe this is a relatively new technology, so, um, but you're sitting knowing what the, uh, the maintenance, uh, you know, the maintenance cost would be on an electric bus versus, you know, a diesel bus or a gas bus over its lifespan.
Well, on an electric bus, actually, you, there, there is no engine. It just doesn't exist. So they eliminate all of those costs that go into that, and you have a, you have an electric motor. And, and so the maintenance on the batteries are really minimal. I know when I ran an electric vehicle program, the maintenance on that were just, you know, like shocks, tires, you know, the normal stuff like that that you normally have on that. Tires are a little bit different on an electric vehicle because they usually have a higher PSI. So they can actually, it's a little tighter tire, so it doesn't have drag on the, on the, on the road. So it's a little bit different in terms of that. But the maintenance is the same in terms of frame, the suspension, things like that. Uh, they might have a little bit beefier suspension because of the tires that are on it, or a little bit different from what I know about electric vehicles. Um, but the maintenance on the battery itself, you know, unless one of them fails, you know, you have minimal maintenance on the type. I don't know exactly what type of batteries they're using, whether they're deep gel, deep cell, I'm not sure. Unless, you know, I don't know if they're going with a lithium battery yet. Um, not sure about those things. There really are no, that I have seen schools that are doing it. And PSCNG was the first, you know, thing that came out of the first energy company that I've seen that came out with looking to do a pilot with some schools. So this is relatively, not so much new technology because electric vehicles have been around for quite, quite a ways, or quite some time. But I have not seen any schools actually implement it.
Yeah, it certainly looks like, you know, something that would be worth investigating when you're talking about a reduction of fuel cost that appears to be significant, but you'd have to take a look at the other things. I mean, the electric motor, uh, it's not gonna need, need the same type of maintenance as a, uh, a diesel motor or gasoline motor. But I, I would think, you know, electric motors eventually break down. I don't know if it's got, you know, you're gonna get, you know, you know, what? Like ten thousand or twenty-five thousand hours of it without any, uh, maintenance needed on that. So it'd just be interesting to know what those, uh, other costs were gonna be, and see if it's an actual savings.
I don't know. I don't know. And I have put out a couple of emails to people who might know a little bit more than me, including Mark Warner. He himself, actually, he's working for Gable Associates, who used to be with Sustainable Jersey. He's heard of a few things in that world, but he has not got back to me yet. So I will keep my ears open and look to provide you with as much information as I can find about. If any schools are doing it, maybe even not in this state, but it doesn't matter. To me, if some school in Ohio is doing it, they're gonna have the same issues that we have here. So I will keep my ears open for you, but that is about as much as I can determine with electric buses.
Thank you.
We did get some of the same information you're giving from our vendor. He did refer us to Medford Township for the biodiesel.
Medford, yeah. Well, Medford, right here. It is, um, and, and Joe Billick would have no problem talking with you and doing a presentation or talking to you on the phone. He's, he's a great guy, he knows a great deal about if you're looking at biodisels or if you're looking at a combination of biodiesel and electric. I would love to see it go electric, just to see, you know, A, how they're gonna work out, but you can't just jump into something like that without research.
Here's what we have so far. He claims that the biodiesel will be the same cost, upfront cost, as the, as a regular bus. So it won't, there won't be additional cost. He did say that a propane vehicle adds between eleven and thirteen thousand dollars to the, to the purchase price, plus a, another minimum of twenty thousand dollars to set up the fueling station. And he also said that they run out of fuel very fast. It's hard to keep them fueled. And the last one was the hybrid diesel-electric model, said that it's an additional cost of a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the vehicle.
Per bus?
That's what he said, yeah.
That's a lot.
So that's a pretty big, uh, plus he also said it's, it's been temporarily discontinued. So, I mean, the biodiesel thing seems like a decent way to go. We're gonna, we're gonna look at that as an option.
I, I recommend taking a look at biodiesel. Because there's some practices out there like from that for other schools that have already done it.
Yep.
And there's some schools that actually will convert some of the biodiesel over for the buses in their school, right in their chemistry lab. So you can actually tie this into an educational learning experience for students as well. When I was involved in the electric vehicle program, there was a school that was running two schools, actually, in New Jersey. I think one was Trenton and one was Cinnamonson. And they were running biodiesel cars, and they were using Jettas. They were using a diesel engine, it was a high-performance engine, kind of Jeddah. And they were making their biodiesel from McDonald's french fry grease. And so they were collecting it for free, and they were processing it in their, in their school. And the only problem they had is that kids were getting hungry because it actually smelled like a french fry when they were driving the car. So that was the, that was the biggest drawback, so much as they were getting hungry. And of that, they were actually pulling it off. So again, it could be a great educational experience for you, but, you know, Joe Billick is one of those schools that has done this for a while. There are others. So in the water and air testing resources, so I, for some reason, this link isn't working, but I'm gonna come out of this for a second and go to Sustainable Jersey for Schools. And go to the actions. Too far. Under this action right here, under fleet, uh, is, I just wanted to back up a little bit. So if you do go biodiesel, just before you go into water and air, you can actually get points in this category for converting over for your fleet, in this category. So this is where it's at, under your carbon footprint. And if you haven't seen this yet, under healthy school environment, indoor quality, healthy water, and in here are all the resources. At the very bottom, you just click on resources. You have a lot of resources here that you can start looking at to actually implement in your school immediately. There's one I particularly like, is the Indoor Air Quality Tools for Schools Action Kit. This used to actually come in a kit that you can, you know, for free, that you can order. But I think they did away with that, and now it's just a downloadable PD, PDF. So if you go to this website, you can order this, not order it, just download it. IET Tools for Schools, particularly good one that's been around for a long time. It's through the EPA. So you have a lot of resources that you can look at, or have somebody else take a look at, to investigate and actually start implementing these things immediately. Same thing with water. Again, click on, if you haven't seen this before, these are really well done, well laid out. Each one of them, you know, who should be involved, project cost, what to do and how to do it, what to submit, spotlights on, this is great, spotlights. What other schools are doing. It's always nice to know what everybody else is doing in terms of success. And of course, the resources in water. So this'll keep you busy for a while. So on those lonely nights when you get bored and you want something to do, go to the actions and look at the resources. Anybody have any questions on those things right there? Because it's pretty much, the resources are self-explanatory. I didn't feel the need to go over it too much more than I had to show you where they are, where they exist.
I think we're good. Super very good. Thank you.
Okay, STEM resources. I wanted to bring this up because School Boards Association actually is a professional development alliance member of NASA. We've had this designation, um, with NASA for about three years now. And it's, it's a really great partnership where we can access their resources and their educational specialists. So when you're talking about STEM elementary, I will put you in contact with a NASA specialist at a Goddard Space Flight Center, and you can ask away. Any questions you want, any resources that they have. You can set up webinars for your teachers. They'll provide resources, all for free. The other partnership that we have that we've developed about a year ago is with the US Army. And they have a lot of resources as well. They have a lot of STEM resources, in fact, more than I ever knew. One of the things that they have, the Army, um, is this Army Educational Outreach Program, and they do have an elementary section with student STEM enrichment activities for K through five and then, you know, six through middle schools, uh, six through eight, and then high school as well. So I had no idea that these, these, you know, for the Army existed, but they, they really do have a lot of resources as well. And then, of course, the NASA for educators. There's almost too much information here. If you have some of your teachers go and look at some of the resources that are, even in the K-5 world, there's literally thousands. So there's no shortage, and these are all free. Same thing with like NOAA and all these other governmental agencies. You have, of course, the Liberty Science Center, who has a lot of STEM resources in all, in all age levels as well. So there's, there's lots of resources in STEM. Oh, be, before I move on with that. So one of the, one of the main things when I talk about, and now tonight's not specific about STEM itself, and we could probably spend another hour on that alone. Um, but we only have a few more minutes, ninety minutes, or believe it or not, are almost up. Um, is that problem solving is really at the key for this. And every time I talk about STEM education, it really starts with problem solving. And the teacher's doing project and problem-based learning, hands-on, mind-on activities is absolutely the way to go. There's so much success stories that come out of that, delivering not so much from a box or a kit, but actually have authentic projects that you can have your students get into, at any age. And in your case, if you're looking at an elementary school, it really is delivering that kind of education that's gonna engage a student with problem solving as a start, and then build your way up into more complex projects. And of course, some of the, the resources that I just showed you here, you know, NASA and the Army and others that are out there. And I actually did provide you with some STEM resources here, for example. These are some of the checklists that I use. And I, I wanted to go over these real quick because I thought they were important as well. So one of the things I do with the schools is I use this checklist. It's not it, by the way. There it is. And I actually walk, um, schools through this to really assess who's on your team, where are you now with, uh, your STEM in your school, the way it's actually being delivered. And this is a document that I can send you as well, if you would like to. I, I will provide this, and you can do whatever you want with it.
Yes, please. That'd be great.
You know, creating a timeline of actions that are needed, Board of Education, Administration, how much does the board really know about STEM and the way that it's going on? What kind of essential questions can you ask to see what's happening in your school? Just to make sure that you're on, you know, on track with the key characteristics of good STEM STEAM education? Teach a professional development. Funding. This is, this is a great area to have great discussions about, well, how much do you actually invest in STEM STEAM education? Some of the problem-solving activities you could do with kids cost very little, if not anything. You could use problem-solving activities starting at kindergarten right through fifth grade, and really, which some of the supplies that you already have. I see a lot of schools jumping to the, you know, 3D printers and really high-tech labs. Not necessary at first. Really the low cost, the investment of just good problem-solving activities to get the kids engaged in what that looks like, and brainstorming and collaboration really is a great place to start. School schedule, curriculum, community, communications and marketing of your STEM programs, characteristics of STEM classroom, STEAM classroom. And I will send you these documents. I also have a STEM resource page, which has a lot of links involved in this. I'm not gonna click on it because we're almost out of time, and I wanna be mindful of that. There's a, there's also, um, unless it's actually connected. There's resources like Exploring the Environment, for example, which actually is a fifth-grade problem-based learning. And it gives a nice scenario of situations, and it's the environment. And actually, the main site, Exploring the Environment, is also a NASA-created. Great resources for teachers to run with this, like tomorrow in their classroom. Okay, it is eight thirty. Does anybody else have any questions, any final comments?
Hey, John, I had one question in the beginning, and then on one of the slides, you talked about the organizational culture as you move these initiatives forward. And you referenced, uh, the school boards building where you're trying, you're in the, in the process of making conversions. And you said there's some resistance by some people. So what are some of the variables that go into those people not buying on to some of the, you know, the positives from, uh, from, from doing this?
Well, I'm telling you what, the, I wanted, and I'll give an example of one of the challenges we met at school boards on some of the staff, is that we did a sustainability audit. And we looked at every, every single operation that school boards headquarters does, and one of them happened to be printing paper and delivering and things like that, where some people were just unwell. some people were just unwilling to change because that's how they've always done business. And so we have a tracking system, not to be the police or the paper police, but we have a tracking system that was on even before our sustainability initiative was kicked off at School Boards or Headquarters, and which monitors how many people, you know, how much individual printers are printing. And we found that some people were just not willing to change to save the amount of paper. And I'll give you another example. We were using recycled content in the paper, like 30% or 25% recycled content, but they were purchasing it from Australia. So the carbon footprint, or the footprint of that was unacceptable, like purchased locally. So that has changed since, but these are some of the things that, they were just going around their business, and some people were unwilling to cut back the amount of paper. They weren't even asking sometimes if somebody wanted paper or not, they would just do it because that's what they've done. So those are some of the challenges, like they just, you just have to actually ask the right questions, you know, and change behavior that way, and make everybody understand that there is a savings with their behaviors. And if you ask people, hey, do you want paper or not? Give them at least a choice until the transition becomes a little more permanent. So those are some of the challenges that, you know, we were experiencing. Even things like, you know, outside blowing leaves and things like that, just little things that actually cost money, cost time, and isn't really necessary. We have to, you have to look at each and every single component of what you're doing and make either compromise or say, yes, this is sustainable, or no, it's not, and how can we do better? And sometimes it's really about small steps, too, just to have that behavior change.
All right, thank you.
I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Yeah, I mean, I'm going back probably maybe 20, 25 years ago, where we did a, one of the corporations I worked for, we did a paper analysis there. I think the cost was two cents per piece of paper, so, you know, we started doing things very simply like doing duplex printing, instead of just printing on one side.
Absolutely.
And I'm going back to where, you know, the, you just couldn't get as much, do a complete paperless environment, but, you know, you look at a piece of paper, it doesn't seem to get that expensive, but when you're buying reams and reams of paper and printing, plus the labor, you know, passing it around and mailing it, the shipping cost and all of that, it's...
It adds up.
It's a major expense, so it's...
It adds up, it does. I mean, when I was at Woodbury High School, we were spending about $40,000 to $50,000 on ink alone, and if they even did 80% paperless, okay, even 80% cutback, they would save a lot of money. The paper, the energy, the ink, everything, it adds up. So things like that, but people are used to it, you know, they see something, they print it, they want to, they want to touch it and feel it, but there's a cost to that. And that's, you know, some of those, you know, the challenges you have in the school, are people are used to that, but they also have to understand what the benefits are going to be, and you're going to make a projection on how much you're going to save, and the savings is going to go into school improvement, for them to be able to doing more with less. So it is a transition, and it's not always easy, but I think it's something that, you know, you kind of have to do. And these are things that are, that could be set in a policy, like, you know, you're going to set your, you know, your printers to print double-sided, and it's just the way everybody does it, so you're saving a piece of paper every time you print. Things like that make a big difference over a period of time.
We were just saying, John, we have Chromebooks in front of us, but we still, we each still have stacks of paper in front of us as well, so...
Like I said, it's a transition, and it takes some behavior changes, but, you know, at least you can think about it, and you know what? If you just put a timeframe on it, and everybody starts to back off of that a little bit, it really does make a difference.
Anyone else, any other questions, or? Well, John, this was tremendous. I hope I speak for everyone else when I say, I got a tremendous amount out of this, and this was incredibly helpful, and I thank you for your time, obviously.
Oh, my pleasure, thank you. I know, I'd love to have been in the room tonight, but it is about two hours away from my home, so I saved about four hours, and this was very sustainable for me.
That's it. That's it, we walked...
I probably got home at 12 o'clock tonight sometime, so who knows?
That's right, we walked the walk tonight, so it's good.
Good, we did walk the walk, and by the way, you're the first school that I've done this with for 90 minutes, and you're actually going to get credit for it, and the technology worked flawlessly, so I'm glad it worked out.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Good night, everyone.
Have a good night. And it bears thanking Cindy Katsanza and Wayne and everyone else who got the technology together for this. That was really great.
Flawless technology.
That was fantastic.
Two words I like to say. Very good.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, we'll take a quick, we're going to take a very quick break, and we'll be right back.
... 28. 23. 22. 21. 19. 8. 16. 15. 14. 13. 12. 11. 10.
Bar brush, you could have just brushed it.
Not only that, this is besides the judgment, it's fine.
Is this?
No, it's exactly...
3, 2, 1. She didn't make a sound.
Got back?
Got to run laps. That's what I do at my soccer practice.
Push-ups.
My munchkins. I said...
Wayne, are you rolling or are you shut off?
Everybody go get a drink, you've got 20 seconds.
Might as well. A minute?
How many laps?
Make them go home, make them cry.
Did you get that?
No, you have to, you have to establish control.
You're back on?
Me.
Okay, from Mr. Iantaska, that he had 447 conferences for the middle school, which is a good number, considering they use it in signup genius now. They did switch to a different type of a conference now. It's not where we ask parents to come, it's anybody can come to a conference, they can sign up, and it's more like a fair, kind of, where you can go, it's a short conference to see each person. Because you can imagine, if you're trying to have a conference and each kid has eight teachers, it's just really hard to get, so if you figure 600 kids times eight periods, it's a lot of teachers to see. School closed today. This was the first school, snow day give-back. Our next snow day give-back is May 27th, and we have three more in June, June 20, 21, and 22. The last day of school will now be June 17th, and our middle school promotional ceremony has been moved to June 17th. This has been put out in the Friday folder, and also through direct emails. Lead graduation last week at Lakeview, this Thursday, also at Riverview. That's the old dare, it's called Lead now. The ESIP, the ESIP program, tonight, the district's voting on to finally award the contract to Honeywell and get started on this, actually for the financing today. We do feel very, very confident that things are progressing where we will be able to break ground in the summer on the project, starting, it'll probably take about six months, so it should be finished somewhere in January, February. Just in case everybody doesn't know, STEAM, what he was talking about, had the A for art. Not sure if everybody knew that, but STEAM is STEM with art attached to it. Honeywell's also been very generous to donate their auditorium for our annual teacher convocation, as well as the refreshment, so I thought that was pretty nice. On September 1st, our annual teacher convocation event, that we call it, will be at the Honeywell Headquarters on Route 53. More information will be coming on that.
I like, I like the church personally, but...
I did, too. I did, I did, it was nice. But it was nice, you know, nice to have, just change it up a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll still invite the church, too, because that was great having in there.
They really took care, they really took care of us.
Yeah, it was excellent. Budget meetings, the schedule right now is April 4th at the Senior Citizen Center, and April 12th at Town Hall for the Town Council. This is in your Friday email from last week. The Riverview Talent Show, there were some concerns with this. The principal felt strongly that, and I feel strongly, and so does Dr. Colas feel strongly, that it's not something that should be done during the school day, so it was actually canceled, and then due to some people were concerned and wanted to put it back, they felt like it was a fun thing to do. We all agreed that it was a fun thing to do, but we want to do it outside of school. So to get it off the ground, we are asking to have two teachers approved for, you know, fairly small amount of money to run this thing outside of school hours, and we did it that way because it was something that we're trying to get off the ground, rather than doing it with parents at this particular time. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you.
Are we approving teachers tonight?
That's on, that's on for tonight, right Steve?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we'll be covering that in personnel. In the meantime, any Assistant Superintendent comments?
Just a reminder that our park testing, our statewide assessments, will begin the Tuesday after spring break, so all the information can be found on the website. At our March meeting, we approved nine of our teachers to apply for the Teachers College Summer Institute, which was a very prestigious organization, and so far, five have been accepted, which is very exciting, and one has been wait-listed, so we will, probably when I come back tomorrow, I'll hear the rest, because it came out over this weekend, but they were very excited and emailed me over the weekend about their acceptance, so it's very exciting news. And this concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Any Business Administrator comments tonight? Okay, thank you. At this time, at 8:45, we'll open up for public comments. If you have anything, any comments about the agenda, or anything remains of the district, if you'd like to come up, and just announce your name and sign in. Anyone at all? Okay. So we will close for public comment, also at 8:45 PM. And that takes us to Old Business. Mr. Luer, would you care to move us through the Old Business items we'll be voting on tonight?
Sure. The following resolutions have been recommended by the Superintendent of Schools to the Board of Education for approval pursuant to NJAC 622.3. We certify that this is February 2016 after review of the Secretary's, excuse me, Secretary's Monthly Financial Report Appropriations Section, and upon consultation with the appropriate district officials, to the best of our knowledge, no major account or fund has been over-expended in violation of NJAC 620-213B, and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the rest, for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Second.
You're moving A, B, and C as a block, right?
Yes, A, B, and C is a block, thank you for the second.
Thank you. Any questions on any of these items? If everyone's okay, we'll call roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Strurina?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Abstein.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napolone's absent. Mr. Capello?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to New Business, under Personnel. If there are no objections, I would like to move items 1 through 6 as a block, and I would point out, under number 1I, Cartahena, it's supposed to be Julissa?
Yes.
And she, it should be Riverview, I'm sorry, it should be Lakeview instead of Riverview. And item K are the teachers we would be, we're going to be talking about for the Talent Show, Mr. Forte mentioned.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Oh, thank you. I also want to point out, we have two teachers retiring from Riverview, Kathleen Bishop, fifth-grade teacher, and Mrs. Grater, our library specialist, both obviously longtime teachers, and obviously, again, as I think we said in our last meeting, bittersweet, we wish them a lot of luck, but also they will be missed.
Those were both effective June 30th.
So I have a question about the Riverview Talent Show. I mean, Anderson was saying that we want to help get it off the ground, and in my time on the board, we've gone through a lot of making sure that there's equity between the two elementary schools. Lakeview, as of when their Talent Show went off this year, had no hand, step-up partners to do it, so if there is growths away next year, would this same deal be on the table?
I think if the principal came to me and said it was something that they really liked, and it's part of their culture, and he wanted to do that, I would definitely offer that to them. Sure. I mean, I think that it's only fair, it's hard, it's hard to get parental volunteers, you know, with a lot of notice, but it's really hard to get parental volunteers with a lot, less notice. You know, this is something that was just thrown onto the calendar recently, so that's why, that's why it's on there.
Is this being coordinated by the PTA, or is the PTA involved in this?
No, the PTA's not involved.
PTA's not involved.
So was it being coordinated by staff for during the school?
Yes. The Riverview Talent Show has always been part of the school day, but it takes up a substantial amount of instructional time. We also have other interruptions during the year, not that these aren't valid interruptions, but I think we have to look at the amount of interruptions and decide which things can be done outside of school, which things should be abolished, and which things we continue to do, and there are enrichment activities, like that nice dance program that they just did over there, and the lead stuff, that all takes time from it, but there has to be, you know, a limit to it. So we think it's a valuable experience for kids, I do, you know, my kids were in it, and I don't know if my son will do it, he probably won't, but my daughter did. I think it's a good experience, but I don't, I don't think we should take instructional time to do it, because that's what we did.
I don't know anything about the program in Riverview, if it's during, did every student participate?
No. It was actually a small percentage that participated, and everybody kind of sat and watched, you know, practice.
That's really the...
I mean, it was valuable for those students, so we want to keep it, but it wasn't a large percentage.
No. It's not as big of a production as the Lakeview one.
Well, it could be a bigger production.
Yeah, that's, that's a big production. It's nice, it's in Maris Knowles, they really do a nice job. The Riverview one is not on that same scale.
And I always say, because as the Lakeview liaison, I mean, I watched them all leading up to that, begging somebody to partner with it, because the parents' children are graduating on, and, I mean, she was running it back when my son, who's in high school, was at Lakeview, and he participated, so she's done her time, and nobody was stepping up, so there was, you know, I have great concern that it won't continue if there's nobody...
True. Maybe we can offer it to, you know...
And it's very, I agree, that for the students that want to participate, it's an incredible experience.
Yeah. You know, I'll mention to Mrs. Basely, same kind of thing. Good news is, too, we are trending substantial, a substantial reduction, year to year, last year to this year, on our extra pay. I'll put out something to you this Friday, you know, comparison up through March, but that's a good thing, is that we are trending substantially lower. So even when we do add things like this, our budget to budget is still...
Wow.
It had a lot to do with the contract, because some of the things that were outside of the contract are now in the contract.
So you said this is to get it off the ground, does that mean we don't plan on doing it next year, or...
No, I meant to get it off the ground because it's hard to get parent volunteers at the last minute, so if it, it could become a parent volunteer thing next year outside of the school hours, we just don't want it to be during the school hours. We also don't want it to become some kind of a political thing, like, well, my kid gets into that, your kid doesn't get into it. We were trying to get it off the ground, have a chance for success, we felt like our best chance of doing that was with the staff members, at this particular time.
Yeah, I fear it, I fear that, and I support having a talent show for these students, but I fear it becomes a political issue, because now you're, you're treating the schools differently. There's a lot of, there's a lot of controversy when it comes to how we handle each one of those elementary schools, and I understand that they've all got different programs that maybe are about the culture of that school, but I think it's also important when you have two programs that are extremely similar, if not almost identical, and you're supporting one with a $500 almost investment, and you're giving the other one and telling the parents they have to support it there, they have this, every school has the same struggles with getting parents to support these programs, and, you know, if we support it, $500 there, next year it's going to be $500 another school, and then $500 the third school, now you're talking $1,500. So it's, it's, not that $1,500 is going to break the bank, but it's, it's, it adds up as you kind of, every single dollar adds up, and we're always trying to look to try to save, so I'd be interested in trying to get the PTAs to support these kind of programs, understanding it's a lot of work, but understanding also, it's, it's also money out of our budget, and I would just be careful how we handle the different programs that are run similarly at both of the elementary schools. It's the only caution I have, and it's not, that's not stating that I don't support this particular thing, it's just an overarching...
True. I think, you know, we, as a board, we're conscious of that, but I think it's almost impossible to have it exactly. Like, I'll give you an example. I know, I know that the Riverview people fundraised for their playground here, and the Lakeview people, last year we bought their playground. This year we're going to buy, we have in the budget to buy a small playground for Riverview, so it's kind of, probably in the end, it kind of evens out a little bit, but you might have one... have one thing goes one way, one thing goes the other, but then we're conscious of it and we correct it. I think that's what happens.
Well, that's fair. I mean, they are two different schools, two different sized schools, so obviously, the equity has to be something we always are looking at, I agree, but it's never going to be exact.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think it just, when you get into two programs that are exactly the same, I get really concerned about supporting one from a financial perspective and not supporting the other one with anything, particularly when that, the other school, not only did the parents do it, but like you said, they did it in Knowles, so there's a significant amount of cost on their program.
That was.
So it's, it's money that's all coming out of the PTA funding that, probably more than $500 was the cost of that program to run, so.
They say they don't really make anything on that, because they spend so much, it's really a break even thing.
Yeah.
At least that's what they're telling you.
And they sell a lot at the program, too. I mean, it's, they sell tickets, I mean, you order tickets online, it's a, it's a big production, but, no, I, I just, I think you, we all recognize it, I just want to make sure that we're careful on that, that's all.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just to, you know, I was going to keep my mouth shut, but I'm not.
No, we'd be disappointed, Don.
Just to get right, you know, Michael's Coke tells a little bit about this. I mean, I've been here for nine years plus, and every, you know, this differences between these two schools comes up periodically, maybe something minor, maybe something major, so, you know, maybe the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, with the principal, we could just take a look and see, you know, what all the differences are, and maybe some of them are cultural and they're no, they're no big deal, but like, you know, a talent show's a talent show to me, and maybe, you know, the performing arts that learn each one are going to be different, but it's a talent show, so I, I think they should pretty much run parallel in terms of if you do them in the day or you do them at night, and who's going to run. I think performing arts are very important to, you know, to the kids and the, it's really important in their development, those kids that aspire to, you know, usable education or, you know, dancing, and so I, I think it's good, but I just think, it doesn't sound like we're really consistent with the deal with the cost management and how it's done, so, you know, maybe we could kind of get them both on the same track the way, the way we do it. I mean, personally, I'd rather see something at night, you know, maybe have a dress rehearsal during the day, and, you know, you have some concessions there, maybe, you know, you sell tickets and everything, raise some money, or at least it's a wash from a cost standpoint, but, you know, more parents and grandparents can go see it in the evening than if you have it during the, during the day. It's tough for a lot of parents to get to these, these different, that it's preferred in schools during the day. But I, I just think that's something we ought, it'd be nice to sit here for a year or two years, and not here, but doing something different between the two schools.
We could, we could, I mean, we could recoup the money. If it's five, it's approximately $500, if we charged $5 to get in, we'd recoup the money, but.
I don't, for me, I don't know if it's a money thing, and I, like, I've processed this whole thing with, my kids went through Lakeview, so I understand Lakeview and my son performed in Lakeview Talent Show. I mean, it was evening things, it's all parent run, and the show is actually on the weekend, I mean, during the day, so it's a weekend. It's just, and I, like I said, I'm not familiar at all with the fact that Riverview used to be taking up school time, I didn't know it existed. As a board member, one who used to ask to be invited to everything, I didn't know it existed. I, I agree with what Mike said, it's just, there's, and I understand what you said, Steve, about you do do things differently for the two years of school, and it's always been easier for me as a board member to explain the differences in the schools when it's PTA-led, because that's on them what they choose to support. But as a district, and predating you coming on board, I mean, we did have a superintendent who looked at everything, because we were paying teachers in one of the buildings for things that we were not paying teachers in the other building for, like, the thing that's coming to mind is like a math night, or a reading night, or whatever it was, I mean, and it was a pretty big to-do, that there was so much, I mean, at that point in time, which predates, you know, a lot of people sitting here at the table, tried to clean it up so there was that equity you're talking about, which was pay for it in one school, pay for it in another, and if they don't pay for it, we pay for it. So.
I mean, I just don't want to see us.
I'll meet with the principals and go through the list of all the extracurriculars and things that they do, and we'll see what is even and not. Remember, not only is it parent differences, it's staff differences, and some people have affinity to one thing, and they get excited about it, and so they want to put in 100 hours for their, you know, $100, but if you don't, you can't make that equitable, you know, that piece, but we will definitely see what the opportunities are. I think they're just trying to bring this back to, we had cut this completely, and bringing it back, because some parents were interested in it. I will meet with them about that.
I'm not, excuse me, I'm not entirely certain what's going, what's going on with this. This, as I understand it, it used to be, up until this year, I guess, it was all run by the PTA, and am I, am I misunderstanding?
The talent show?
Yeah.
The talent show in Riverview is runs by the, by these teachers during the day.
It's the equivalent of a second grade play?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But not all the students participate, that's what makes it very different.
I was under the impression that it was, that it was run by parents, okay.
The Lakeview one is run by parents, the Riverview one's run by the teachers during the school day.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Deluna, you have any comments? You good? Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to instruction and programming. Mrs. Lindsay, would you care to take us through it?
If no one has any objections, I'd like to use motion forms for five as a block, which includes the Gilt Disrupts, the three-year comprehensive equity plan, the weeding of this library we're sitting in, removing books, almost 1,000 books from the reference collection, plus the weeding log of another 577 titles, also from the reference collection. And, Professor, you're up.
Thank you. For the second?
For second.
I think Mr. Anderson, I think Mr. Anderson beat you.
I also, I would like.
You can get the next one.
I would like to point out, the three-year comprehensive equity plan is from 2016 to 2019.
Thank you.
It begins July 1st, 2016. That needs to be read into the minute, so we can do a certified resolution tomorrow.
Okay, and I don't need to add it to the line, I'm just reading it out. Oh, I have to.
That was it? Okay. There we go.
Well, that is what the plan that was shown to our community for school, yeah.
I just didn't put a date on it, on the resolution.
I have a question about the weeding, the weeding that's going on. How many titles did the reference section start out with? Because this is, we're talking 1,500 books here, that's, that's, that's a, that's a lot of books.
This is the stuff over here, you know, all the, all the encyclopedias and things like that.
Not a lot of enci, I was looking at it before the meeting, there's not a whole lot of encyclopedias in there.
Well, I'm talking about referenced books, like where you're going to look something up or a fact. Looking at a book for a fact, that's what those are. So I don't know the exact number, but it's that section right there that they're talking about. Remember, we've all talked about this, it's, we're going from about, somewhere around 11,000 titles to around 6,000 titles in this library, basically eliminating most of the reference stuff due to the fact that technology usually takes the place of most reference materials, and we have other items that have, you know, been here for years and need to be discarded, and are old and, you know, not in good condition. So she has a decent sized budget to replace some things with more modern titles, she also has a budget to add some technology to the library, make it a more modern type of media center.
Maybe Dr. Colas or Mr. Forte can answer this, so on, with the references, and switching over to more technology and everything, are there any issues with like citing references or any questions like that, where they're going to need a physical hard copy as opposed to citing an electronic reference?
You can cite all things electronically.
Yeah, and the students are being taught how to do citations, because most of their stuff is electronic now, like their articles, even when they download articles from Ed's Co-host and stuff, they're all electronic.
When I, when I went to college, it was the interweb that was, we weren't allowed to actually reference those, so just that's, excuse my ignorance.
Wow, how old are you?
Worldwide web.
On that note, I mean, I asked my son, who's a sophomore in high school, so he left here two years ago, when I mentioned to him that we were reading all these titles, and he said that when they came in, of course, encyclopedias you can access, but he said they were being taught with books. When I said to him, does it make sense to you that we're getting rid of all this reference material, he said, that wasn't the way he was taught when he was here, that there are a lot of sources at his high school, that you're not allowed to use electronic sources. As in, if the book is electronically available, obviously you could use it, but not every book is electronically available.
That's true.
So, I mean, I was just also curious, since you brought up, that reminded me of that conversation I had with him.
If not, we'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
I'm going to say yes to one, two, and five, but no to three and four. Can I, I, this is the first time that I've voted against something that was part of a block. Can I do it like that, or do we have to?
Yes.
You're good, yeah, you're fine.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I'll vote the same way, yes to one, two, and five, and no on three and four.
Mr. Cass?
I'm not sure that would be in here.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Moving on to policy. Mr. Anderson, would you care to move us through policy?
Sure. There are no objections, I'd like to move just the one item we have for policies. There are five policies, two for first reading, policy regulation number 1310, employment of school business administrator and board secretary, we talked about that a little bit at our work session last couple weeks ago, I guess it was, policy regulation 5512, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, first reading, and then second reading and adoption for the following, following policies, which are 2363, pupil, pupil use of privately owned technology, 5120, assignments of pupils, and 5756, transgender students. We spoke those three quite a bit.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Deluna. And on policy 1310, that, this is the one that we're going to be talking about in committee between now and the next, the next reading?
Right.
Can we have any comments or questions on these?
Which committees do we have?
Personals.
Maybe the only one that's mandatory.
Let me see. Transgender is not mandatory, but it's recommended. BA is mandatory, 1310, 5512 is mandatory, 2363, I believe, is mandatory, that's, that's the change for our, our BYO program, and assignment of pupils is mandatory, it's the thing that we changed to allow, to try to possibly shift kids around if, if possible, to even out the class between the schools.
Well, when I, I'm saying mandatory, you see how it's like larger than M, like they're telling that, you know, Strauss has may or whatever.
Oh, right.
There's a state thing driving it.
They're all, yeah, I mean, that's just because we left the M on there, but they come, they come that way, with the little M there, but for some reason, we didn't put the Ms on the other ones. Anything that you have to have, like a policy that they tell you have to have, is the mandatory ones. You can adopt some changes to things, like our harassment, intimidation, bullying policy, you have to have it, we're making some changes as per our attorney, due to the fact that we've done some workshops and things, and we're looking to change the way we're doing it, so it's changed a little bit. But yeah, these other policies, you still have to have them, but you, we're ma, we're changing it.
Well, I'm thinking we don't have to have them.
Okay.
I'm asking, do, I just want to understand, like, there's five here, we have to have a hit.
I'll give you, no, no, in this Friday's email, I'll put out the list of mandatory policies.
Well, normally, it's reference, like the law on the bottom, so, I mean, you can use any, I'm just wondering from, just to make sure I understand the process, so.
Well, let me find, let me, let me send it to you guys, so you can be 100% sure.
While we're at it, Steve, you could maybe have somebody look, I just wanted to go look on our website, since all our policies are there.
I know, it says under construction.
Oh, mine just says FDP, except for 2000.
Take a look at the top, it says under construction. I put that there, because we're in the process of converting them from Word documents to PDFs, and we did an audit of all of them to make sure that they're all in the right place. We had them, we had them in three places on the website, which was causing a problem, because you could Google it and come up with a spot where there was an old policy, because we didn't change it, so now, we're, we went through the audit, and we're going to convert them all into PDFs, so it's easier.
So Barb, can I answer one of your questions? 246? Never mind.
2363?
Never mind, I'll take it back. I thought that was one of them that was on the list, but it's, it was from last month. So no, I can't reach any of them, Steve. Well, the assignment of pupils has a, some NJV teenage statute in it, so I'm assuming that maybe it is a. Oh, wait, that one's on our list. Assignment of pupils. We found out. 5120, policy assignment of pupils, without having M on the. But yeah, I would think maybe it is mandatory to have something, so, I'm just from a, like, is, it is something we should, as a group, be emphasizing, if we can streamline, in the name of Green Initiative, and do away with policies that don't make sense or aren't necessary.
5120.
The book we get from here to here, it's still a big one.
I don't usually, I don't usually give you any of the policies that aren't mandatory, because it's hard enough to keep up with the mandatory ones.
Transgender's not.
No, but that was because.
The technology one is a good idea, and we kind of agree, but I'm thinking that if you're going to stick with the convention that Strauss has made, if they say it is mandatory, you leave the M on, then I'm good with that.
Well, let me, let me stress what I'm saying now. I don't bring to you policies that aren't mandatory, and if I do, I tell you, next thing is, I cannot speak for the ones that you already have. Like, for example, we had 2363 already, this is just a revised version, so whether or not that that's mandatory, I'm not 100% sure. 5756 is recommended, but not mandatory. It probably will be mandatory, like, I'm sure it's going to be mandatory any day, but at this point, I don't believe it's mandatory. But what I will do is get the list of all the mandated policies and regulations, and I'll put it out Friday.
Okay, that's good.
Well, and it's probably, I mean, even if they're not mandatory, Steve, though, I mean, some of these, let's say, assignment of pupils is not mandatory, it's going to give us a lot of help with what we're trying to do, potentially in the future with some lines, so, I mean, it, I guess, I guess your point, Steve, probably is, there's mandatory, and then there is what you would recommend as far as ones that maybe aren't mandatory, but best practice for the district?
Correct. It's like, if I feel like the district is liable for something, or, and a policy will help us, you know, reduce that liability, sometimes you do have, like, the transgender, you know, 5756, that's why you're doing it.
Yeah.
Have something in place, and that's what our attorney recommended, have something in place prior to needing it.
But Barbara's point is, is well taken, that if there's an opportunity for us to weed out some policies, you probably feel the same way. I mean, if there's stuff that we don't need, that we're not, either not following, or that, you know, doesn't make sense anymore.
Then, on the other hand, you guys weeded out the one about pregnancy of pupils, and then we had to put it back in.
I was going to.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it changes all the time.
In theory, I totally agree, and I've said many times, that anything that we don't need or don't follow, we should especially don't follow. It should be gone, and I would hazard guess that about half of our policy manuals isn't mandatory, because just on this list, I'm looking at 5120, it's not mandatory, I'm
list, I'm looking at 5120, it's not mandatory. I'm looking at 1310, it's not mandatory. We all agree 5756 isn't mandatory. So, I doubt that pupil use of privately owned technology is mandatory, since every district doesn't deal with it. So, one of the five on our list is probably mandatory. The only one that's marked is an F.
Yeah, I mean, if we keep that commen, it just helps me, like, I know by law, we have to have a hit policy, or whatever.
But, to Steve's point about if we take the assignment of pupils on, my training, and I know it's old at this point in time as a school board member, is, and I mean, it came up in our, you know, lesson this evening, that we, as a board, set policies so that the superintendent, and the principals, and our administrators know what guidelines they can work on. So, without it, what happens? They either have to come to us with every single thing to get it approved, or they do stuff without us having any knowledge of what the parameters they're working with. So, I mean, there's a reason.
And, I mean, that's our job as a board. We are a policy-setting body. And just because it's not mandatory by the state, doesn't mean we don't want to have guidelines in our district. So, as much as I would love to see half of the binders gone, now that they're online, I don't feel so bad, and I'll be glad when we get it weeded out, so you can't possibly find an old copy. That makes great sense, that you're taking care of that now, so.
It wasn't easy to find, but you could find some old ones, which is a pain, so we.
I'm sure. That's always been a problem with our website, and in the last redesign, we thought we got it so that everything went back to a single source, so when you changed it one place, it got to change everywhere, but obviously, that is not the case at all. So, you know, you're going to have to always find multiple places to change things, so thank you for working on it.
We had the technology people do an audit of the entire website, so find anything that was old, and let us know. But this one is a little bit of a bigger project, because they're on my secretary's computer. She's got to convert them all to, to, from Word to PDF, because I want them in PDFs, because it's easier to download for everybody, and then we have to reload them all. And there's been other stuff going on, so she's going to get it, it's just, that's why I put under construction.
Actually, strange, because in my time on the board, we didn't have it online, and when we made the push to do it, they were slowly but surely coming on as we updated them, remember, Barb? And then, in one fell swoop, and I thought it was all scanned in, so I would have thought that was all PDF, when they, all of a sudden, we got all of them, not just the ones we had updated.
That's what you did originally. Once you, once you switched to Strauss has me a couple of years ago, when you had the online version.
Well, we've been with Strauss has me all 10 years I've been on the board.
But when you went from the hard copy to the online version, before, when you had a hard copy, you had a hard copy, you scanned it, you put it online. Now, they give them to you as a Word document, so whenever you're updating or changing it, it's a Word document. If you don't change it back to a PDF and post it as a Word document, it's on a Word document. So, that's the only difference. That's why they were all scanned at one time.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay? Yeah. Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to finance. Mrs. Deluna, care to take us through?
Sure. If there's no objection, I'd like to move the items on their letter D in their agenda under finance, items number one through 11 as a block. This includes the ESIP formal proposal, allocating money for that, starting at the top, the wheelchair donation, the YMCA. Just point of clarification, did we need for it to be through, like, a three years, through June of 2018?
What's that?
For the Y, the contract.
It's a two-year, two-year, starting July 1st. So it'd be 16, 17, 18, 19.
All right, so we're, because we were.
We did get them to agree to a freeze of the fee. They agreed to an increased pay to us for the rent, and a freeze, a freeze of the fee to the parents for two years. Being, the fee to the parents won't go up for two years.
Other items include number three, the AB equipment, disposing of projectors. Number four is disposal projectors. Five, the Eric West Fund, yeah, the $1,000 grant application in New Jersey School Insurance Group, safety grant. Number six, behavioral support services, additional $1,000. Number seven, Chromebooks donation. Number eight, PPE Chambers School contract for staff training, nothing to $900. Mine is the drinking water testing service, the lead, and number 10 are the checklist.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. So, so on the water testing item, I know they're going to be looking at lead. Are we looking at anything else in terms of the quality of the water? I mean, is it just purely a lead test, or is there anything else they're looking at?
This particular test is only lead. We, I shared with you the town water sample, whatever that is, information pamphlet, and so there is a small amount of lead coming into all of our water. And so, right now, at this particular moment, that's, things are going on, and the public is testing for lead. Originally, because I didn't know this, I thought that testing the water coming in would be sufficient, but it's not, because the water lays in the pipes, and it could be lead, solder, and things like that. So we started looking for some, we used our environmental consultant, who's New Wave, they've been around a while, and they gave us a plan of how we should test. It's not just like, oh, let's test for lead. How do you do it? What's the plan? So we create, they created the plan for us. Then what we did was, we looked for companies that could actually do this, and we asked for some quotes. We found this company here, Westchester, which I used before, and they, they came in at a substantially reduced cost than some of the local ones. I think right now, the cost has been spiking, because there's so much need now. So, our, our company is coming in and saving, it's going to be about $2,000 less than what it would cost to use the local one. But they are, right now, our environmental consultant and this, this company, Westchester, because I asked that exact question, I said, well, why are you drilling the water? Is there something else we should be testing for? And they said, no. So, I said, okay, well, you know, that's why they're there. And they said, no, this is, this is what you should do, and they told us how to do it. So, I asked that exact question you asked.
Okay, because the reason I ask is, and you may have run across this, in the fifth grade wing at Riverview particularly, those classrooms, when they turn the water on, it runs brown for a while. They tell them, let it run. So, I mean, I don't know if it's just pure rust, or if there's something else going on there, but, you know, it seems to be common to that little, that wing there at Riverview, so.
Okay.
I don't know if that's something we should delve into a little more deeply.
Somebody drink out of that water, are they?
Well, that's the question. I mean, you know, they, they, my sort of teacher tells them, bring water bottles, and she brings a water bottle home, and they fill it in the fountain outside. But there is a sink, and there is a sink in these classrooms.
Yeah, if that's coming out brown, obviously, when it's sitting there, there's something just coloring it, and then they run it, it cleans up, so there's something going on there. Yeah, I had a question, I don't know if you're able to find out. I sent an email, when the town tests the water, you know, where are some of the sites that they're, they're testing it at?
They, they only test the water at the entry point.
At the wells?
They don't test the water once it gets into our building. They're responsible, they're responsible for the quality of the water up to our building. We're responsible.
People's wells.
We're responsible.
Right, all right, so, so, we have, like, in our neighborhood, right, we're getting our water from the well. So they're, they're testing the water, and this comes out of the well.
No, I'm sure it's only the town water.
They tested at multiple locations.
I know, I don't remember the. Yeah, I mean, the town, you've got the town, the A's on here. I mean, the town, the town, I guess.
You don't, you don't know about.
We're finding you on the spot, right now.
They didn't train you on that yet? That would be.
Well, obviously, they're drawing the water, the wells are drawing the water out of the ground. It's being treated, and then it's been, it's put in the water mains to go to, you know, the businesses, the schools, and our house. So.
As I understand it.
They're, they're testing the wa, you know, they're testing waters, where it's being discharged from the well, before it gets into the pipes that deliver it to the residents.
As I understand it, they test as it comes out of the ground, and they test after it has been treated. But that's, and then it goes into the distribution system. It's, they don't like open, they don't like open a water main, you know, in the middle of town and pull a sample out of it.
Oh, definitely a good idea to check. I mean, you have a lot of older homes in town, so you have, the older copper is soldered with lead, lead in the solder. So, it's, I'm sure a lot of the water infrastructure is pretty, pretty old, you know, throughout the town, so.
And just for, just for clarification for the public too, so this, this actually encompasses testing of every outlet, right, Steve?
Every outlet that would be used to drink from.
Yeah.
Not, not the toilets. Here's, we asked this, not the toilets, not the spigots outside where you might water something.
Yeah.
And it's also not the sinks in the bathroom. And that is all as per our environmental consultants. I said to them, I don't know anything about lead testing, tell me what to do. They said, test everything that you would drink from, meaning a water fountain, anywhere where you would cook from, any sinks that would be in a kitchen, anything like that, you would test. But you would not test, basically, you don't test the toilets and sinks that you wash.
So that's about 120, if I remember correctly.
Approximately 120 outlets.
So it's, it's a pretty thorough test, and this isn't like we're testing it at one spot and saying, we're hoping the other side of the building is good. This is really everywhere where somebody should be getting drinking water out of, so.
Well, that was the thing that I kept talking about, was that, like, it makes sense to do some random ones. You say, well, you could test this one, you could test one sink, and the other sink could have, could have old pipes to it, and you don't know it. And that could be, could have a contamination. So, to be safe and to do it the right way, because we don't want to sit up here and say, our water's safe, if we don't really test it. So we'll, we're telling everybody we're testing it, and once the, once the report comes, it'll be a public document. We'll publicize the document, explain exactly what happens. If we come back with some lead in there, we will have to have a, you know, a solution for that, which could be, obviously, an additional expense. There would probably be a short-term solution, then a long-term solution.
As I understand it, the contract specifically states it's the first flush testing?
Yes.
Okay, that, that means that the, that the brown water, they should sample the brown water coming out of the tap. The, the normal state regulations are supposed to let it run for a certain amount of time before you take the sample, but this first flush let catches, is supposed to catch the stuff that sits in the pipes.
Because they were talking about not running it for eight hours, at least eight hours, okay.
They want it to be no longer than eight hours, no, no shorter than eight, but no longer than 18. So, we're gonna, we're gonna flush the pipes the night before, you know, in the afternoon before, then they're gonna test first thing in the morning, before we turn, anybody turns on the water.
Steve, this may be a little bit in the weeds, but how do we maintain, we have a lot of non-school people that come in the buildings, and if we want to get a good test here, are we going to put up signs on, like, the drinking fountains by the cafeteria or somewhere?
Well, we're going to do it when the buildings are closed. Like, we'll do it on Monday morning.
Okay, so coming out of the sun.
Before, before anybody comes in.
Actually, we can't do it on a Monday. We're gonna do it over Chris, spring break. Nobody's using the building.
Okay.
So we'll do it, like, on the Tuesday of spring break. On Monday afternoon, our maintenance people made a list of all 120 faucets. I want, I told them, I want somebody to sign off that they flushed that thing 10 seconds, 18 hours prior, because that will get us false positives if we leave the water in there from Friday till Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, all those spigots have to be turned on for 10 seconds to flush them out. And then, eight, between 18 and eight hours, they're gonna draw the first water.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone have any other comments?
The ESIP one, did our legal guy just review the warning?
Yeah, our, our.
It's intimidating, section 8 there.
Our attorney, Lisa Gore, our bond counsel, she wrote it.
She wrote this, okay.
Right. When it comes to the contract itself, she will review it, and Matt Giacobi will review it, but this is the resolution from Lisa. She writes the whole thing word for word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm like, I, I can't remember definitions, but I wasn't sure what we're agreeing to on that, section 8 there.
So this is.
And it's basically the thing that we passed out, you know, two weeks ago. Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed. And that document is live online now, our ESIP document, the entire document's there. So, if you notice, there, there may be some positive cash flow here, which is a good thing, meaning the ESIP program may end up paying for another $40,000 or $50,000 worth of other things that aren't in the program. For example, we have six rooftop units we should replace, but the ESIP's only doing three, so maybe we can do the other three. That would be a good thing.
So Steve, just to clarify too, so we lock in whatever our expenses are for energy. So all those expenses that are in the ESIP, beginning of the ESIP document that show the cost at each one of the schools and everything, that's locked in for a certain amount of time. And then, so do we pay, let's say it gives us a savings of 10% or whatever, 20%. We pay that 20% difference to New Jersey Natural Gas or whatever, then we take whatever the difference is, and we pay?
Pay off the.
Yes, okay. So that, that's broken out, they tell, we have a kind of a payment plan or whatever they, okay.
That amount has to be transferred to a separate amount to pay the principal's and the interest for them.
Okay, so guessing we report then our energy costs, and then they come back and say, okay, here's the difference, pay us this. Okay, got it. Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? Nothing else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except on motion 10, I need to abstain on check number 67399, and I also need to abstain on our motion of pardon.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, does not look like we have anything specifically under buildings and grounds. Mr. Cass, would you like to take us through transportation?
Okay, I'd like to move that the board approve the joint transportation agreement with the Educational Service Commissioners of Morris County for 2016, 2017 school year.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Oh, Barb, got you. Thank you, Mrs. Deluna. Any comments, questions? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay? Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to good of the cause. Do we have any committee reports? Do we have anything to report since our last meeting? I don't think we do. I don't think we had any committee reports. Correspondents? Oh, that's perfect, never mind. Any other discussion items?
Yes. We had your email regarding affordable housing, and I did click on the links to the mayor's report in the background. So I did send an email to Senator Buco, Assemblyman Buco, and Assemblyman Harrell. I heard back from two of them so far, and one of the emails I got back indicated that would be, be who me, as well as us, to be riding the leadership of the Assembly and the leadership of the Senate, because, as you know, the Democrats control both houses. And I also suggested that, you know, a resolution should be done by, by the board, because you never know how this is going to shake out. But, you know, Vino's estimate was, I think, about 300, we have the developer's solution, which is build a lot of cluster housing, and they allocate so many of those units for affordable housing. So, if it's three, you know, I don't know where you'd put 350 units in Danville. I think, you know, my viewpoint, the town's built out, but they're, you know, if you take your numbers, whether it's an estimate or whatever, 350 and 60, that's, it's an impact to the school with additional kids. But also, to me, it's a very negative impact to the community. And a lot of time, these people suggest, we'll go to high-rise. I think they did that in New, you know, so, you know, I don't think I want to see a high-rise in Danville. I don't live here, but I want to have a high-rise. I'll move to Hoboken or Jersey City or New York City. So, I think it's a real, a real serious issue, and I think a lot of, it just kind of flies under the radar with a lot of people in the suburban communities and everything. If you have an affordable housing obligation, I'm sure there's a way to do it, without having just a huge influx of additional homes, and crimping the services in the schools.
Well, I think it bears mentioning that, those are definitely not my numbers, but they came from the town. And, Miss Witty, if you would care to, if you care to make, say something about it, because I interpreted what I read there, but I'm sure you could tell us a little better.
No, it's right here. The whole thing has come out, we, you know, the courts have taken over the whole COA situation, and there's been no movement at all, because it's at an impasse. There was a Kinsey report put out about a year ago, as to what each town needed to do for the. for the affordable housing. And our share under the Kinsey report was 1,000 affordable housing. Now, whenever you have affordable housing, you have four to five times as many housing units built, because builders are not going to build just affordable housing. There has to be, they have to make some money too. So you're looking at 6,000 units being built in Denville. Denville went into a special consortium kind of thing, and there's 200 communities in Morris and Sussex, I think that's the two main, main two counties, that have now, are involved in a lawsuit kind of thing. The judges are in charge, the court system is in charge of this whole thing. And we had to come up with a plan without any number. And Denville has always been ahead of the curve. We have more affordable housing than we are supposed to have. And there was a report being done by Rutgers. Unfortunately, just as this report was supposed to come out, the presenter had a stroke and has not been able to give the report. So we had to go through another whole group, who we came up with a whole plan. We have sent in a, another plan, which will include these extra housing units that you were talking about. All of the developers, there are three basic areas that they're looking at for affordable housing to get our affordable housing numbers in. They have been told, they, some of them have submitted plans for high-rise, and Denville will not approve it, period. Anything that's approved will fit in with what we have. And yes, there would be town homes, there would be some kinds of things. Three, four, four people have come in for builder's remedy, which we don't want to have because builder's remedy, if they get approved, then we end up doing, having to put in more clusters than we want. So two of those have been sent to the state along with a couple of other sites. One's on Castor Line, one's on Franklin, one's on, the other one is, oh, Redmond Press, that would be a redevelopment section. They're got, that whole area needs redeveloping, and they're talking about putting in another almost Essling Lake type situation there, redeveloping that. Plus, group homes, we get credit for every bedroom in a group home. We have two group homes on Hinchman already, we have a couple of group homes someplace else. They're looking at putting a group home situation on, at Lake Lenore, which is right off of Mount Pleasant. Unfortunately, if you look at all this, the school that's going to be impacted is going to be Lakeview. Because that's the only building, there's no real building area on the River, Riverview side, the north end of town. So this whole plan has gone in. It more than meets this consultant group that told us how many we would need. It has gone to the courts, we've done our due diligence and everything like that. We're gonna have to put, we're gonna have to build more, no matter how we look at it, because it's coming down out of the state. They're telling us what we have to do. So that's the plan. We are working on, trying to get as few as we possibly have to build. But that's where we are right now. I, the next meeting, I'll bring, they have the whole report we can make public, so I can bring that whole report and show you exactly where they're building, how many units we already have credit for, because rentals give us more credit and things like that. Okay? Any questions?
The only question I had was, so will the state, if it's not zoned appropriately, because a lot of these are not zoned.
No, that would have to change. See.
Would the state force us, force the town to change the zoning?
The, the state would force us, this is why we put this plan in. These are places we would be willing to do some zoning change if necessary. We don't want to build like, when the Kinsey report came out, it was really crazy, because they looked at any open land, period. Open land including the green, no, no, the, runs, runs between, I can't remember, think of the word right now. What's silly? That runs on Route 80, the space, you know, the median. They, they considered that open space, can you imagine building affordable housing in the middle of Route 80? No. So we were, we said, this is a ridiculous plan. The zoning would be changed, yeah, but we would have control over it. This plan actually says how many units we would see, would allow built, what kind of units we would have built, how much of it would be affordable. It usually averages out to about 15% of whatever's built comes out to be affordable housing. We're trying to do it in a proactive way, so that the judge looks at it and says, oh, yeah, Denville is going to come out with these numbers, they're going to come out where the, above what the consultant said, but, you know, nowhere near what Kinsey was, report said. But we, we, last meeting, they brought this whole thing out and gave us a whole picture report of where everything is, so we can share that. But the interveners are the problem, because the interveners are the ones that can take everything to the state. If it's not, if, if they say we have to build more or differently, they can go to the state and say, we want to build, you know, a high-rise there on Castor Line Road. You know, build all these five-story building of apartments on Castor Line. And the state could come back and say, yes. So that's why we're doing it the way we're doing it, trying to make sure we can have a say in what's done. It's way down the road, really, because there's no deadline. We've sent everything in, but we haven't been told when the courts will report on it. Then if the courts do, say, act in our favor, then we still, it all still has to go to the planning board, everything has to be approved, all the zoning's got to be changed. So you're looking down the road quite a ways. We don't have a specific timeline, but we know it's going to be a while.
And these are 10-year plans, right? Is that what you envisioned, is 2025?
This, this, this is 2025. This is where we would be in 2025, right?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
In the vein of our training earlier this evening, I wanted to bring up a couple of things that I have mentioned to individuals before, but I don't think I've brought them up in the actual meeting. All the computers in here are on. You touch the mouse, the monitor comes up, they're all on. I, I understand that there are times that you need to leave them on so they can run antivirus or whatever. Every time we're in here, they're all on. That's something we could change right there to cut down on electricity. There's, I'm sure it's the same in all the other schools. Turn off the computers at night, first person who comes in in the morning turns them all on. Saves us 12, 14 hours of electricity running the computers. It's not much for each individual computer, but you're talking about that for at least 180, 180 nights during the year, and they probably aren't getting turned off over weekends or breaks either. The lights on at night, I realize that there are some lights you want to leave on for security reasons, but my wife went by the school to try to get in and pick up a misplaced homework folder a couple of weeks ago, and all the lights in Riverview were on and there wasn't anybody in there. So that's something we might want to look into. And there's, there was, I think there was four instances of bottled water in one of the check reports. I mean, if we're doing, if we're really interested in going green, why are we buying these disposable bottles? Why doesn't everybody bring their own water bottle? Or make it a fundraiser, take your, take the school logo, take the Board of Ed logo, throw it on, throw it on a water bottle, sell them for a couple of bucks apiece or whatever, and everybody can bring their own, bring their own water.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one. Okay. Hey, after our last board meeting, the CPAC hosted, and I meant to bring all my paperwork, and I somehow forgot, Learning Ally to come in and do a presentation on dyslexia. And I went, it was a hands-on, along with other people, where they are from the district. But it was a hands-on, help you understand, and I've been to dyslexia trainings before, and this really was eye-opening. And they talked about it as a spectrum, I want to say disorder, but I don't remember the word. But it's a spectrum, you can be, have multiple forms of it. It was very eye-opening to me, and I meant to bring my paperwork to share, because the one that was truly, there was the reading comprehension part, the visual part, but the handwriting part, where they had us do it, try and simulate what it's like for a dyslexic writer to try and write. And try as I might, they, one of the activities they had you do was to try and trace a star while watching in a mirror only, with your dominant hand while you're blocking your hand, so you can only look in the mirror and see what you're doing. And no matter how I tried, when I was at the bottom of that star, I could not get my hand to go up. And that's why I wanted to bring my paper, because it's like, I gouged a hole in it, because I kept going, no, 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 this is up. And I kept going in the same wrong direction. So it was very eye-opening to me from the, when you're decoding every word, trying to figure out what it was, how you couldn't get any comprehension. The whole thing was eye-opening to me, and the presenter was very knowledgeable, being both dyslexic himself and, you know, it was a wonderful presentation. So I wanted to share that that was a very positive evening, with a lot of people came out. I don't remember what the count was, and I don't know why I keep looking at you. But it was well-attended, and it was a true bringing together multiple communities, because there were people here from many communities, not just Denville. So it was a fabulous night.
I attended the New Jersey School Board's Legislative Committee meeting last week, last week. And unfortunately, I had to go alone, so. But it was a good session. They covered a lot of ground on, you could have come with me. We had a presentation about healthcare costs and managing healthcare costs, and they really drilled down into some detailed items, which I thought were really interesting. One item which they talked about, which I think does impact us potentially, is when you talk about like our Bennett Card programs, the programs we offer our faculty and staff, the one big driver of cost now is specialty drugs. They did an analysis over the last couple of years of the number of scripts written in certain school districts for specialty drugs, and they represented 1% of the scripts, but they represented 24% of the cost. So one of the things they were recommending was look real closely at your specialty drug provisions. Do you have a separate tier for that? Things like that. So there were a lot of details that they got into, which I thought was really informative. They also talked about the pension plan. Obviously, there was a lot of discussion about that last year at the state level. That apparently reached the legislature debt on arrival. They claim that that's still the case, but, you know, not completely over. And obviously, all those pension, all those pensions have to be funded somehow, so there's still, there's still a hole there that somebody has to dig out. That's it.
I have two things to follow up on Dave's comments. The water bottles are something that PTAs could do as a fundraiser for next, you know, we're getting towards the end of the school year here, but maybe for next fall? You know, they could sell it to the kids for $2, whatever it is. I know we've, I do, we've used water bottles for a player giveaway at HUB Soccer. They're, they're pretty inexpensive when you buy them in bulk, but I, I think that'd be a.
Lakeview offers them, I know for sure. I just saw them at, at the conference night, they had them available at the Spirit Stores, so they do have them. I don't know how often they're purchased, but they do have them.
We purchased Riverview ones a couple of years ago, I haven't seen them since. And we also, I think you, you all talked in the buildings and grounds at one point about, as maybe as water fountains need to be replaced, looking at putting in the fillers, the bottle fillers.
Yeah.
It would be a good helping that process too.
The other thing is on the, the computers being, I know, I was struck with a man once at home, that I should be turning my computer off at night, because it goes to sleep and uses electricity. So our technical people, I mean, is it more wear and tear to be turn, you know, booting up these computers every morning? You know, I mean, and is, and is that doable too? But I mean, to have somebody come in and, you know, I don't know how many computers we have in the school, to be, you know, turning on all the, all of the stuff every day.
Well, I'm not sure if you realize it, I get, I understand that you probably want more, but up until recently, all these computer screens were on too. And we just did a policy, a group policy, Wayne actually did it, and the computer screens at least go to sleep somewhere around 5:00 in the afternoon. Before all the, that's District Y. So before, all the screens stayed on. And the ESIP thing will address some of this. There's a plug load management provision in here. So I don't want to, I don't want to do it the way, I'm not going to have people turn them off, because that's going to be a problem. It has to be done as a network control thing, and that's what we're doing. So we'll move on at more.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not.
Oh, I was just thinking, I went to the Pride, they have a bunch of dates, a bunch of blood drives, and when they finalize the minutes, they'll board them. There's a lot of blood drives. And there's a dinner next month, you know, to honor, every year there's an honor.
It's coming.
First of April? I was just saying, Bob Raff is selling them. I didn't know.
And where's that going to be? Zeris? Okay. Great, thank you.
Does Pride have its own website? There was an online purchase option, and Bob. So it's sooner than I thought.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, at 9:50, I'm going to open up for public comments again. Anything germane to the district at all? If you have anything, please come up and announce yourself and sign in. If not, I'm going to close also at 9:50. And open up for any board comments. Anyone have anything? Okay.